Welcome. To the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for January 9th. I had such high hopes of starting off the new year right by starting on time, and I apologize for that. If you have a cellphone in your pocket, you might take this opportunity to turn it off or down, is what I'm doing. Okay. For those of you who don't do this every few weeks, the way this works is we have a few little things we'll take care of here at the beginning. When we get to the items that will be individually heard, we'll ask the applicant to come forward, give us their name and address for the record, tell us what it is they're asking of us. We may or may not have questions for that person. We may or may not discuss it amongst ourselves. If there's anybody else here who wants to be heard on that item, we'll ask them to do the same, just come forward, give us their name and address. And at some point, we will discuss it amongst ourselves and vote on each item in turn. Starting off, first order of business today is to receive the minutes of the December 12th meeting.
Second.
Have a motion of second to receive the minutes of the December 12th, 2019 meeting. Cast your votes, please. They are received. I'm sorry, we have items to be continued?
We have uncontested requests. There are several. The first is B-27, SPUD 1183, which is deferred to January 23rd. Item 28, SPUD 1169, deferred to January 23rd. Item 29, SPUD 1172, also January 23rd. Item 30, also deferred to January 23rd. Item 31 to February 13th. Item 32 to February 13th. And item 33, PUD 1744, has been withdrawn. We have five new requests for continuance.
Let's stop there first. Is there anybody here who wanted to be heard on any of those items? If not, I'll take a motion on those.
I move approval of the uncontested request.
Second.
I have a second, I have a motion of second to continue items 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, and 33. Cast your votes, please. They are continued.
The new requests are item 9, CE 7125, deferred to March 26th. Item 19, CE 1011, deferred to January 23rd. Item 22, SPUD 1178, deferred to February 27th. Item 23, SPUD 1184, deferred to February 13th. And the last one is item 24, PUD 1746, deferred to January 23rd.
Is there anyone here today who wished to be heard on any of those items? If not, I'll take a motion.
Motion to continue items is read. Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue items, let me see if I can do this. 9, 17, 22, 19, 22, 23, is that right? And 24. Cast your votes, please. Those items are continued. Are there any other continuances?
David Box, 522, Call Core Drive. I thought you said 17 in that list, but...
I thought I did, too. Not?
You should not have, but we are requesting to defer it. So, this is new information you're learning right now.
I see, I'm sorry.
We need to move that to the first meeting in March to allow for traffic study to be completed.
Okay. Is there anybody here who wants to be heard on that item today? Item number 17, PUD 1748?
Do I?
Okay, well, then we need to revote on our previous continuance request. Can't we just fold it in? No? I'm sorry.
Can we do a new one totally?
Just resend your other one and then make a new motion.
I'll rescind that motion and make a new motion, continuing.
You have to vote on the rescission first.
Do what?
We need to vote on the motion to resend.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Second.
I have a second, a motion and a second to resend, what exactly?
The vote that you took to continue these items.
The new request.
A new request, yes. Oh, I see. So, we're moving and seconding a motion to remove item number 17 from our previous vote?
We're adding it to the list, I believe.
Oh, I thought you included it.
I think that was the whole point. We did include it, didn't we?
Can I take a stab at it? I'll take a stab at it.
Scotty's so organized.
You mentioned 17, and we had not actually submitted any request to continue.
I see.
I just learned what I needed to learn from staff prior, and so I was going to come up on, does anyone else?
It's kind of a no harm, no foul thing, it's continued, isn't it?
I mean, I'm fine with it, but...
Oh, that's what it was, he just corrected me.
Okay.
Okay, so now, do I have a motion and a second to continue item number 17?
First, we have to resend.
But you said you corrected me.
Can I take a stab at it?
Let's go to that.
I'd like to, I'll make a motion to resend the Planning Commission's vote on the new requested continuance items 9, 19, 22, and 23. We just need a second, so we can take that vote back.
Don't we need to include 17 in there, though?
Nope, just second that motion.
Second.
We didn't do anything about 24. I know, but that was, we're rescinding the entire vote, the whole thing.
I'm gonna do it again.
So, did you second it?
I did, but you did not say 24 when you read off those numbers.
9, 19, 22, 23, and 24.
I second that motion.
Now, I'm really confused.
We're voting on rescinding the vote we took.
But I thought that vote included 17.
It didn't.
So, you don't need to rescind it, do you?
We're just gonna take it back, we're gonna...
Just do it, just take it back and then we'll do it.
And we're gonna do the motion again, and then we're gonna include 17 now formally, since it was not recorded in the record correctly, according to Susan and...
I'm just gonna take your word for that. So, I have a motion and a second to rescind our previous vote, and I'm gonna leave it at that. Cast your votes, please. It is rescinded. Now, I'll take a motion.
A motion to approve new requests 9, 17, 19, 22, 23, and 24.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue items 9, 17, 19, 22, 23, and 24. Did I do it right?
Yes.
Cast your votes, please. They are continued.
I'm gonna try not to do what Mr. Box did. Ryan, 2832, S. Wisher, we request a two-week continuance for item number 21.
Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a motion to continue item number 21?
Do we have anybody here?
Is there anybody here? I doubt that. Do you have anybody here who wants to be heard on item number 21? No.
Two weeks, is that what you said?
Two weeks, we're taking two weeks?
Yes, ma'am.
But I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue item 21 to the January 23rd, 2020 meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue item number 21 until the, I'm sorry, what is it, January 23rd meeting? Cast your votes, please. It's continued.
Thank you.
Did we get past that part? These are items that are relatively routine, for which there's no protest that we're aware of, and we vote on them as a block rather than individually. Would you read those for us?
Item 1 is an application to rezone 3716 South Mabel Avenue from R1 to I1, and the second is an application to rezone 5,000 North Post Road from AA to RA2.
Do I have anyone present who wishes to be heard on either of those items? If not, commissioners?
Move approval on the consent bucket. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve items 1 and 2. Cast your votes, please. They are approved. Items to be heard.
Item 3 is an application to rezone 1129 Northwest 26th Street from NB Neighborhood Business District to SPUD 1176.
Is our applicant present?
I will be recusing myself from this case, for obvious reasons.
Good afternoon, call Serami Phillip, 325 Northwest 25th Street. And we are seeking to, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we're seeking to rezone neighborhood business, zoned lots, three lots, to allow for multifamily development.
Commissioners, this is an application, or a project, anyway, that's been percolating for a while. It is directly north of the Supercow Win, if you're familiar with that area. It's kind of an interesting project to bring more density and, dare one say, a certain hipness factor to the area. There was one item in the staff report I was a little confused by, had to do with providing, maybe a TE, providing bicycle parking spaces?
Yeah, we, one of the items in the master design statement allowed for less than 1:1 parking ratio, which actually, you know, we're working through different designs. I think we'll hit 1:1, right now we're at 34 parking spaces, we're aiming for 36 units. And one of the things that we discussed was providing, we want to provide bicycle parking anyway, but to allow for extra bike parking for any missing parking spot.
And we had talked about that, that the market here was, you know, not necessarily automobile owners, you know, that it was definitely designed to encourage pedestrian access, it's near mass transit and so on, so the parking indoors part of it is a little, I'm not quite sure how we would deal with that, but, commissioners, do you have any questions? Do you have anybody here who wants to be heard on this item? If not, I'm kind of excited about this possibility. And I'll take a motion.
If there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council on SPD 1176.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve item number 3. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
All right, thank you.
Item 4 is an application by Oklahoma City Public Schools to rezone 2400 Northwest 36th Street from R1 to SPUD 1180.
Is our applicant present?
Jason Cady with Mass Architects.
I'm sorry, say again.
Jason Cady. 1200 Leslie Lane, Norman, Oklahoma.
This is a proposal for reuse of Sequoia Elementary School, which I think will be a wonderful thing. The application as it stands is a bit unwieldy. I've asked the applicant for a two-week continuance on this, so that we can have the opportunity to sit down and go through it, and make sure that they have the options that they need, but that it doesn't include a lot of things that they don't need, or that there are sufficient considerations in the PUD, SPD itself, for some of the possible uses that would be allowed under the zoning they're requesting. Are you okay with that, taking two weeks? Come forward, give us your name and address, please.
Sure, Bill Maytubey. My address is 1420 Southeast 19th and Moore. I brought a bunch of brochures to hand out to everybody for this project. The purpose of what we are doing is to do, provide after-school activities and things. I think you understand what that's for. We're very limited on what we can do by both our inter-local agreement and our lease terms with Oklahoma City Public Schools, so it really is very prescriptive. I understand your concerns over the zoning, but I want you to know that that is not going to be an issue.
Well, it's an issue for us. The zoning runs with the land, and so regardless of who is leasing the property or who owns the property, it stays in place. So, I just want to make sure, as I said, that you have the flexibility that you need to do what you want to do with the property, but I want to make sure that, you know, some uses that would not be appropriate in this setting are eliminated from that process, and other things. I mean, they're just, even with the uses that are there and are allowed, I want to make sure that there's a sufficient accommodation of them on-site, so if you're in agreement, take two weeks.
Yes, sir.
I'll be glad to make room in my calendar, sit down and meet at your convenience. I know you're under some time constraints.
Yes, we are.
And I'm perfectly willing to work with you on that. Can I have a motion, please, continues, two weeks, so until the January 23rd meeting?
Make a motion to, unless anybody has any discussion on this, I'll make a motion to continue SPD 1180 to the January 23rd, 2020 meeting.
Second.
I guess before I take that vote, is there anybody else here that wants to be heard on this item today? We'll be back in two weeks, so you can catch us then, if you'd rather. Okay. I have a motion and a second to continue item number 4, two weeks until January 23rd meeting. Cast your votes, please. That item is continued.
Item 5 is an application to rezone 12200 North Piedmont Road from AA to SPUD 1182.
Mason Schwartz, 522, Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a SPUD application for roughly 4.5 acres of land southeast of Northwest 122nd and east of Piedmont. It is currently zoned AA. The properties to the west are zoned AA as well, and directly north, there's an existing tank battery, I believe, on that property to the north. Across 122nd there, that has been zoned under PUD 1418 for 400-plus acres of mixed use. Our client actually owns the properties to the east and to the south. You'll recall, in December of last year, this commission recommended approval for roughly 70 acres of straight rezoning from that property, from agriculture to R1, and so this is a bit of kind of the next piece of the equation, and it is in SPUD 4, to allow for personal storage type use, related office uses, et cetera. What we've done with the SPUD is C3-based, but limited to only nine uses, or use units that are specifically allowed. We've also reduced significantly the signage that would apply to any other C3 straight zoning, so we think we've reduced it to make it consistent and compatible with the development pattern in the area. We also believe it conforms to the Conference of Plan designation of urban low. If you're unaware at this point of any protests, we, staff report does recommend approval based on four TEs. We can agree to TEs number 1 and number 4. We believe we can agree to TEs number 2 and 3 with conditions to that. TE number 2 reads, "No overhead doors shall face Piedmont Road." We would like to modify that to read, "No overhead doors shall face Piedmont Road unless screened from Piedmont Road by a building." If you look at the conceptual site plan that we provided, the ideas that we might have, those are, for example, personal storage-type buildings. The three buildings on the west, under this TE, which we're willing to agree to, would not have the overhead storage on the west side facing Piedmont Road. However, those three on the right, we want to keep the flexibility to be able to face those west, since they'll be screened anyways, allows for more flexibility in the site design and the circulation, et cetera. And then on TE number 3, we would ask that, we're okay with the way TE reads, but we'd ask that you add a sentence at the end that says, "However, the residential buffer shall not be required to be installed until such time that adjacent properties are platted as residential lots." This is just a sequencing request. You know, we're willing to do the residential buffer, but we'd like to wait at least until those lots adjacent on the south and the east are platted, and so we don't have to do it immediately, but certainly before they're actually, you know, breaking around on the residential development. So, with those two conditions on the TEs, which our conversations yesterday with staff, as we understand it, I think they're willing to agree to the way that we've requested to modify them. With those two conditions, we would ask of your approval, and happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, I'm pretty familiar with this stretch of road. It is slated for improvement. They have actually funded that now, haven't they, to improve Piedmont Road south?
I would defer to staff on it, but that sounds correct.
I think that's a state thing.
Last thing I read is it was coming up north to Wilshire is the piece that's been funded for better construction at this point. Yep.
I had a little bit of hesitation about the idea, you know, going from double A, just stripping this, you know, Piedmont Road out, you know, off the corner, and C3 and all of that. The personal storage doesn't give me quite so much heartburn. The suggestion that you make about the modification to TE number 2, when you use the word "screen," you're really talking about view, and so if the understanding is that the overhead doors will genuinely not be visible from Piedmont Road, I think I would be okay with that. The fact that there happens to be a building between it and Piedmont Road is not sufficient, in my view, if you can still see them, so...
Sure. The idea would be to have them fully screened. We were just, you know, challenged coming up with language here in the last couple days to make that.
No, I think that's good language, if everybody understands that screened means you really can't see them.
Well, just to kind of defend the concept a little bit here, for them, if you can see those doors back there, you can see all of the doors along the north and south sides. So, you'd already be viewing a lot of doors from any angle where you could see those. Technically, I mean, this basically only blocks the view if you're dead-on straight elevation towards the buildings from Piedmont, which is whatever, but I'm just making that as a note.
I don't think that's necessarily true, but I get your point.
Well, and there's a chance they would face east. It's just, I think the flexibility on that back half of the parcel, to be able to orient those buildings when the time comes, a little bit of flexibility is really cool.
I did have a comment for staff about this particular staff report, where you've set up your table to give us code standard versus SPUD post-standard comparisons. If I'm reading it correctly, it's comparing C3 to what the SPUD would allow, but the property is actually zoned double A. That seems to me not a great way to make that comparison, if we're gonna set up those kind of comparison. And I do find them helpful, but I think they need to reflect the zoning as it is, not the zoning that it could be if we allowed them to have it unrestricted. Is there anybody here who wants to be heard on this item today? Commissioners?
Two quick things. I agree with you on those tables. I think they're really helpful. I think as long as it shows us what the use is now, and then what is proposed, that helps us see what is going to change from a compatibility standpoint, not what it could be if it were C3, because it isn't, or whatever that case may be. I noticed that in a couple places, so I think it's a good point. On the master design statement, I think this is just an error in the staff report, but your intention is to make the architectural element of the building 70% brick veneer, rockstone, masonry, drive, it's stucco wood, correct? Because that's 30% in our staff report.
Yes, I believe that is. It's actually, as I read it, to typo as well in the master design statement, so it would be a standard language error, that's 70/30.
Yep, just making sure that I got that correct. That's all I got.
With that, I'll make a motion, no further discussion. Motion approved, SPUD 1182, with the TEs as read, 1 and 4, and the amended TEs, 2 and 3, and the amendment to the master design statement.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve item number 5, with the amendments to the TEs as read. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 6 is an application to rezone 3312 Northwest 135th Street from PUD 249 to SPUD 1185.
Dean Colita, Civil and Environmental Consultants, 4045 Northwest 64th Street, representing the applicant. On this project, we're, simple request, there's an existing, I guess the location's off of Memorial, on the southeast corner of Hefter Parkway and Memorial, there's some office buildings there and some other retail. Essentially, the simple request here is there's an existing PUD in place, and we've kept and mirrored everything in the PUD, except we are requesting blush salon and spas, trying to go there, and they want to be able to sell wellness drinks to their clients, so we are coming in with a basic request to add convenience sales, but limited to only salon and spa, non-alcoholic mixes and drinks. So essentially, that's the only thing that we're changing from the original PUD. Got any questions? I'd be happy to answer anything.
The only concern I have about this application really is just the precedent. When this PUD was negotiated, it was clearly following the, you know, commercial along Memorial, office behind it, to step down and buffer the residential, then further south. This particular use, it seems to me very low intensity. It's really almost an office use, but I have some concern about that vacant tract that remains. I would really not want to see more robust retail push south off of Memorial, but, I mean, that's really kind of my only concern about it.
I agree. I think, given the fact that all of these buildings are now completely blocked visually by Mathis Brothers facility there, I think it's pretty unlikely that you see a retail application come through something like this, probably far more likely. I would, this, I saw staff's comment on the road, I just point out, this is not, it is a public street, but it isn't. The only people who are coming and going on this street are people that are coming and going from these businesses, so the curb cuts here are not a concern to me. This is not Memorial. I think the application makes sense, we're just altering a use unit within a PUD that's been established for a long time. If there's no further discussion on it, or nobody to be heard, I'll make a motion, but I'll wait to find out.
Let me ask, is there anybody else here who wishes to be heard on this item today? Apparently not.
Anybody? Once, twice? Okay. I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council on SPD 1185.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 6. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 7 is an application by the City of Oklahoma City Police Department for a special permit to operate a helipad in the I-2 district located at 5505 South Portland Avenue.
I'm Jim Loel, Oklahoma City Public Works Department, be glad to answer any questions for you.
A helipad at the airport, what were you thinking? Commissioners, any comments or questions of our applicant? Is there anybody else here who wants to be heard on this item today? It's hard to imagine a more appropriate place for a helipad to go, actually, so... I'll take a motion.
If there's no one to be heard, I recommend approval at SP 541.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 7. Cast your votes, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8 is an application to rezone 7900 Northwest 89th Street from PUD 262 to PUD 1747.
David Box, 522, Call Core Drive. This is a PUD application that would take what is part of the old 262 PUD and take it away from office and put it more commercial. You can tell, given the number of PUD 262, that it was done quite some time ago, and it just simply didn't develop as they originally intended, so what we're attempting to do So what we're attempting to do here is to put it into the ability to have uses that are more marketable and will allow development. When you look at that screen, it is immediately behind that Walmart Supercenter. So with that and the surrounding commercial uses, we believe this application to be consistent with the surrounding area, consistent with the conference plan, and would ask for your approval. There are two TEs, both of which we agree to.
My only comment about this application really has to do with the alarming creep in the size of signs. It's 12 feet and 150 square feet, really so much more necessary than eight by 100. That's kind of been our standard, and I'm not sure I see the need.
So I think, I mean, I think 12 feet, given the amount of signage that exists within 262, I don't think 12 feet to be unreasonable, given the high rate of speed that Council Road is there. So I don't think 12 is a big jump. I frankly was going to go in with 15, but my client convinced me to go in with 12. So to me, 12 feet is certainly reasonable. It's certainly within, I think, the framework of what the commission wants, being monument. But when you have something that is as big as this is, the additional footage would allow for multi-tenants to be on signage, so.
This is a multi-tenant sign, right?
But you're asking for four of them.
It's a lot of land.
Well, I think it's too much, me personally. Council, I don't necessarily have any problem at all with the idea of this being commercially developed. This area is sort of, has long passed, outlived the likelihood that it's going to be developed with office space, I think, especially given its location directly behind the Walmart. But the signage, I think, is sort of a bridge too far for me. Commissioners?
I have a question related to that. With the 12 feet, does that allow for any landscape at the base of it?
Yes, we'll have to meet the landscape code and the point system required at the base of the sign, correct.
Janice, what are your thoughts on what a compromise might be for the signage?
Well, I think either fewer signs or bring them down, one or the other. That would be my thought.
It's tarnished only seven people to read this room.
How many access points are there?
We will have to come back for specific plan. What we're showing is three. But we do commit to a specific plan, so we'll have to come back at that time.
Are you showing three just based on separation requirement?
Correct.
Is that why? Yeah. I mean, I don't know that I'm in agreement that our sort of general policy is eight feet. I think we've been more conscientious in areas where signage is not affording a road. I can think of lots of debates we've had about property. In fact, not very far from this one, we had a very lively debate about signs for a medical facility that was going to get built at the corner of Council and Northwest Expressway. There have been instances where we've approved everything from, you know, 30 on down. It depends. And to me, when you affront a section line road like this, these are the things that these tenants are going to want when they come in and look at these pad sites. It's clear from the site plan what they're doing. These are going to be pad site developments, little restaurants, things of that nature. Their sign expectations are that they're going to have a sign, right, that you can see as you're driving down the road. 12 feet is not offensive, doesn't bother me, I don't have an objection to it personally. Just kind of giving you the other side of this discussion. I think if this were tucked in front of a neighborhood, like right, you know, backed up to a neighborhood or something like that, maybe we look at it differently. If it wasn't Council, we'd look at it differently. But I think you have to be careful to say eight feet is our standard, because I don't know that I could quite go that far, especially with retail pad site development like this.
Going from the diagram and the map of the number of tenants they're going to have here, it equals out to about 30 square foot per tenant of signage, which is smaller than a sheet of plywood, which is not a whole lot on Council Road at 50 miles an hour.
Yeah, but even if it wasn't, right, even if these, what essentially appears to be an office development, a garden office development of some type is going to back up to this, even if they didn't have any signage and it was all going to be attributed to these four pad sites, I still don't think that that's outside the realm of what you'd expect to see on any section line, primary arterial road, as it relates to retail businesses. So I'm saying I don't have a problem with it, I just want to make that point now.
Commissioners, have I already asked if there's anybody else who wants to be heard on this item? Apparently not.
Well, if there's no other comment, I'll make a motion to approve PUD 1747.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve item number eight. Would you cast your votes, please? It's approved.
Thank you.
Item number nine has been continued. Item number 10 is a preliminary plat of Meadow Lake Industrial Park, located north of southwest 119th Street and west of South Meridian Avenue, and also a variance, which is in TE2, and another variance in TE3.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. Also have the applicant, Mr. Steve Buchanan, with me today if you have any questions of him. Obviously, a preliminary plat to construct an industrial park. I think we have 27 lots that vary in size on 80 acres. The site's already been zoned to I-2. There are five TEs that we're in agreement with. Let me speak real quickly to TE number two and three. On TE number two, if you look at the way that it's structured, we have to either provide a street stub to the south or receive a variance. We have agreed with Fire Marshal's Office that we'll go ahead and provide that stub to the south. So that being the case, we won't need the variance, and we'll just simply stub to the south. On TE number three is a variance request for the length of the cul-de-sac. We do need that variance. Obviously, your subregs do not differentiate from single-family to industrial or anything else. So it's pretty common for us to request these on industrial developments. If you look at our site, we've got a FEMA floodplain to the west, but we also have a fairly significant drain that runs back from the floodplain to the east that basically bisects the property into a north track and a south track. That's the reason you see the development pattern, the way that we're proposing it. It's virtually impossible for us to make a connection very much further to the west, so it kind of defeats the point. So with that, that's the reason that we're asking for the variance. We are providing the street stub to the south. I've been in correspondence with Mike Wilson and Fire Marshal's Office. They're okay as long as we provide the street stub to the south and provide them a turnaround at the end of the street stub. So with that, we need that variance request, and we're in agreement with the other TEs. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Do we know where the street stub will go? Does it show on here?
It does not on that. However, I did bring an exhibit, and I think our plan will be is to basically just take the cul-de-sac and make it an eyebrow and stub it due south. And then you'll notice that there's also a circle at the end of the street stub. That's the temporary turnaround that we've agreed with the Fire Marshal that will put in until such time as some development to the south would connect, and then that would go away. And you can see from the blue, that's an existing pond. The green is the floodplain that in a large storm, that that pond will back up, especially with us utilizing it as detention, so that you can see how that the site's basically bisected into two tracks.
Does your client own the property itself?
No.
Thank you. Let me ask, before we start, is there anybody else here who wants to be heard on this item today? Commissioners?
Did staff have any issues with the variance request?
I'll need a vote on the variance first, if we're sunken.
I'll make a move. I'll make a motion to approve variance three on whatever this is. Application C 7124.
Second, the motion.
I have a motion and a second to provide a variance to table 5.1 of section 5.3.2 of subdivision regulations. Would you cast your votes, please? The variance is granted, so I'll need a motion on the preliminary plat.
I'm sorry. I make a motion to approve C 7124.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the preliminary plat of Meadow Lake Industrial Park. Would you cast your votes, please?
Thank you all.
Item 11 is an application for consideration of a lot split deed approval located at 2813 Drakestone Avenue, and a variance to section 3.4.4C.2 of the subregs in TE1.
So are applicants present? Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, Mark Lil, 1620 Norwood.
And what is the nature of your request exactly?
We're requesting to split the lot into two residential properties.
I'm asking because normally, these kind of requests come to us with a story. You have use in mind for the second lot?
Yeah, it's going to be residential.
Well, the zoning would control that. Are you going to develop it yourself? You're going to sell it? Is it for a relative or?
We're going to build two houses.
Okay.
So we won't be changing Drakestone, the view. There's already a house directly behind it.
I see that.
Is there already a cross-access agreement for that house?
There's a shared road there, and there is an agreement through that. It's a common road. And then we do agree to make the five-foot easement for the water line. The staff has recommended, we're agreement upon that.
Since we're actually doing a lot split deed approval, it is the deed we are approving, I would suggest that that, I'm not even sure you would still call it an easement, be shown on the face of the deed, I think, rather than, you know, by separate instrument or for us to rely on that. I think the grant of the five-foot panhandle for the water service line needs to show on the face of the document. Just my own thought.
So when we plot it, when we plot it, we can put that in.
Sure.
And when we set the deeds up, we can do that.
Are you in agreement with that idea? Okay. Is there anybody else here today who wishes to be heard on this item? No? Commissioners?
So there's already, there's a road there now. I cannot picture this road that connects this lot that are front Drakestone.
It's like, I think it's on the west edge.
Is that where it is on the west side?
It's on the west.
And it goes all the way back to the track even north of your northern, what will be your northern lot?
Yeah.
Really?
It's actually like a driveway.
Yeah, it's a long driveway.
It's not a street.
Right, I understand.
It looks like it's asphalt, though.
It is asphalt. It's basically a private road, a shared road.
This is a very strange little area over here, so. There are lots of little things tucked behind other things over in this area. And it's redeveloping quite, little things are becoming much bigger over there, and that's a very real trend that's been going on for a while. It's been an interesting transformation of the area. My children used to go to preschool over here, and so that long ago, all of these houses were still tiny, little, odd-looking, huge lots, you know? And it's really been transformed. I don't have a problem with this. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to, is there any other discussion? Everybody good to go? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve DA 25971.
Second.
Yes, we need to do the variance.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance to section 3.4.4C.2 Subpart B.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the variance to item number 11. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Now I'll make a motion to approve the application for DA 25971.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve item number 11. Cast your votes. It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12 is an application to rezone 1308 North Pennsylvania Avenue from S P U D 65 to S P U D 1173.
Hi, my name is Tuan Ho. Address is 1308 North Pennsylvania.
Tell us what it is you're needing.
Excuse me?
Tell us what it is you're asking for.
Oh, we currently own that section on that corner. There's a store in front of it that's actually zoned as E4. The warehouse that's behind it was added on about 20 years ago, and we would like to get that rezoned to be able to have more options to lease out that warehouse, pretty much the same as the C4.
There are two items under the technical evaluations that I would call your attention to specifically. One is that you amend your base zoning to C1. Are you in agreement with that?
What was the question again? Sorry.
Whether you're willing to amend the base zoning of your S P U D to C1.
Um.
I think it will permit you to use the building in the way that you intend to do without allowing some other uses that would be a little bit more problematic at this location.
Okay. We were, what about agriculture?
Say that again?
What about agriculture uses in that part? That's one of the main reasons we were trying to.
The way you've prepared your application, at least it appears in our staff report, is that you're allowing a base zoning of C3, and then you've added specific use units. One of the use units that you've added specifically in addition to that is what you're referencing, which is the Agricultural Processing Limited 8150.2?
Mm-hmm.
So her recommendation wouldn't change that component of your application?
Okay, that's all I needed.
And the other one is that you, that if the building, for some reason, is removed or rebuilt or replaced, that the new building would have storefront windows, which would be in keeping with our design review. Since, I assume you don't intend to do that.
No.
It might be less difficult for you to agree to that, but I want you to be aware that that is a technical evaluation that's being asked to be included in the approval.
Okay, I understand.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
And what are you going to do with the sign that's there?
Which sign?
There's a pole sign, which apparently we would like to have removed to facilitate some of the landscaping and streetscape improvements. Are you okay with that?
We had no plans for it, but if you would like us to remove it, we can remove it. It's just been there.
That would be lovely.
Okay.
There's only one access along Pennsylvania. Commissioners?
I just want to make sure, a couple of things, that you understand fully as the applicant, because we don't see you every other week like we see a lot of the folks that have appeared before, so I want to make sure you're clear about this. Your C3 amendment to change to C1, it is going to limit, based on what you submitted, the number of uses that don't have anything to do with your agricultural processing. You understand that, right?
Yes.
That it's going to limit those other uses outside of that, and you're okay with that?
As long as it has agriculture, then we're okay with that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you're fully aware of what you're agreeing to at this point. The other thing is, the sign, do you use that sign presently?
No.
You don't use it presently? And is it on the S P U D property? Because I think there was some discussion about that in the staff report as to whether or not it was even on the site.
It's in between the two buildings. The building's actually connected, so right where the bottom, the outline, that's where it's at.
Okay, right on the bottom edge?
Yeah, on the left side.
And you're saying you own the property to the south?
Yeah, we own both properties.
Okay.
And you don't need that sign? No.
Okay.
They have other signage provisions in here, and it seems to indicate that they're not intending to use it, so that was why I asked.
Did we cover TE2? I heard us talk about one and three.
We did not talk about TE2.
So just so you're aware as well, TE2 would change, would basically revise your language to meet the city standards for landscaping.
Okay.
So it appears, based on your drawing, that you guys plan to provide a good amount of landscaping. I don't think it will affect what you're planning to do negatively.
Okay.
That sound right? All right. So again, I'll just talk.
Do we know? Can I ask, staff, have? Have you looked at his site plan, and do you have an opinion about whether he's going to meet the requirements with what he's proposing here?
It's the same site plan that was approved with the current spot.
So, so after all this talk, we think with the TEs, you're going to be able to do what you want to do.
Absolutely.
We're, this is just.
Yeah.
All, just administrative, really. So if you feel good about all those, then I'll go ahead and make a motion, unless anybody else has anything to say.
Did I ask already if there was anybody else who wanted to be heard? I think I did. Apparently not.
Feel free to correct me, anybody, if I, if I say this wrong, but I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval on SPUD 1173, accepting all TEs.
Accepting as opposed to accepting, right?
A-accept, yeah, we're, we're, the applicant's agreeing to that.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 12, subject to the TEs. Cast your votes, please. It's approved.
Thank you.
Item 13 is an application to rezone 1801 Northwest 39th Street from R1 to SPUD 1177.
Good afternoon. Klaus, I'm Philip again, 325 Northwest 25th. And we are seeking to rezone an R1 single-family residential. It's going to stay R1, but we want to rezone it to allow for three separate, single-family dwelling units.
Commissioners, this is another of the adventures in increased density through the model of multiple, single-family residential units on a single lot. There was some concern about Indiana, which is, you know, a very narrow street. The layout of the property has been redesigned to keep any driveway off of 39th Street, which is a very busy street, it'd be very difficult to access residentially, I would think. But also to position the units on the lot in such a way that there is room to park in the driveway of each unit, so that parking along Indiana will not be required or needed to serve these. There is a, a technical evaluation that indicates that a maximum of two family units would be permitted, but as I understand it, those concerns were more about the access onto 39th than about the parking, and that with the resolution of those issues, staff is okay with the three units, which I think are appropriate at this particular location. They wouldn't be everywhere, but here, off of 39th, where they are, the, there are units all along, there are homes all along Indiana that do front onto it. It's, it's not a strictly north-south orientation, and so I think, I think they're appropriate here. I'm okay with the density.
And although that it is a deeper lot than usual normally, I think they're like 140, 150, and this one's actually 170, I believe, long, so, yeah, we work with staff kind of back and forth on dedicating, we're actually dedicating part of this property to that right away, so.
Otherwise, you're in agreement with the, with the TEs?
Yeah, so we absolutely definitely agree with sidewalks, TE number 1, and TE number 4, which is one of those concessions that we talked about, and then we request that we do not include TE 2 and 3.
Is there anybody else here today who wants to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion, eliminating TE number 2.
I recommend approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion.
You got to delete.
Deleting TE 2.
Yep.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 13, deleting TE number 2. Cast your votes, please.
Two, I'm sorry, 2 and 3, I believe. I think 3 was, they kind of go hand in hand.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, TE 2 and 3 kind of go hand in hand. They're both reducing it from 3 to 2.
Oh, I do have someone who wants to speak, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Well, there is no access onto 39th Street. That was the part I was focused on, I guess.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that was the two drives on. Right, part of TE 3 says access shot limited to two drives, yeah.
Right, right. Okay, so I need a motion to approve item number 13, eliminating TE number 2, and eliminating the first sentence in TE number 3, but. But, can I have one? A motion.
Deleting TE number 2 and the first sentence of TE. The first sentence of TE number 3, second that.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 13 with the adjustments to the TEs as stated. Cast your votes, please. It's approved.
All right, appreciate it.
Item 14 is an application to rezone 505 Oakdale Drive from SPUD 709 to SPUD 1181.
David Box, 522 Colacord Drive. This is an SPUD that would trade the ability to raise fish or the ability to grow medical marijuana. It is an interesting SPUD. If you look at what's currently there, there was fish raising and wholesale as well as retail sales. We're simply trying to modify that to allow for the, the growth of medical marijuana and the sales. There is a TE that we agree to, however, I do need to address the language within the spud. There was some confusion. When my client actually submitted this, I was involved at the outset, and the intent, if you look at the site plan, if you go back, staff could go back to the site plan, the intent is to have, and it's, it's not oriented the, the correct way, but, oh, here we go, there we go. You can see the proposed block wall. The intent of the, the SPUD when filed was to have the block wall be surrounding the entirety of the cultivation area. Somehow in revisions, it, that got lost, and what is allowed is just along the south half of the west property line. I need to make sure that what is allowed in the spud would allow up to an eight-foot wall surrounding the entirety of the cultivation area consistent with the site plan that you see before you. So the intent is for that to be a masonry wall to add a further layer of, of security and protection. The area, if you've driven, it's a, it's an interesting area because of the rail line that exists not far south of Melrose. It's a predominantly industrialized area. There is some residential to the north and to the north and west of this site, but when you look at it, there is a lot of, of industrial and heavy industrial. I-3 is what is immediately south of this site. So given the historic use of the property, I believe it to be consistent. We're simply trading crops and fish for a different type of crop. So with that, I'd have to answer any questions.
I want to be clear about what you're saying about the wall.
Yes, ma'am.
It doesn't go around the entire site, but it goes around?
Correct, just the cultivation area. So if you look at the, the site plan that you see on the screen, you'll see that extra thick line. The front, where there's a current residence and current retail building, that's what fronts Melrose, and so that will not be screened. It's the stuff in back where the cultivation and the processing will occur, which is where we need that eight-foot masonry wall.
Okay, thank you. The TE requiring buffering along the north, along Oakdale Drive to the north fence line of the house, we're okay with that?
Yeah, we agree with the TE.
Is there anybody else here who wants to be heard on this item today? Commissioners, thoughts? Questions? Concerns? A motion?
I recommend approval of SPUD 1181.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 14. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 15 is an application to rezone 4101 and 4107 South Shields Boulevard from R2 to SPUD 1186.
Is the applicant present? Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Justin Rhodes, 2325 Northwest 52nd Street.
And what is it that you're needing to do here?
Basically, off of 40th and Shields, there are five residential lots currently zoned R2, and what we're proposing is basically, in the spud, is to have one large lot, one legal description, to build four duplexes. Basically, it gets a couple more dwelling units, and it lays a, lays the property out a little bit more proportionately with the footage of the, of the five lots.
Are you, have you seen the TEs? Are you in agreement with those?
Yes.
Okay. And including limiting to four units?
Yes.
Okay.
Four duplexes.
Eight, yeah, yeah.
Yes, four buildings, yes.
Okay. They might sign up.
I do not have anybody signed up to speak. Is there anybody here who wants to be heard on this item? Apparently not.
Do these follow a design standard of some sort? I mean, what are they going to look like? Because there's been a lot of stuff built on Shields here in the last three or four years, and some of it's really nice, and some of it's clapboard siding.
Basically, four-story, or two-story duplexes. They'll be mainly stucco, a little bit of brick, but 70, 75% masonry.
Commissioner Hinkle, just without any design review, the only thing you're going to get from an architectural standpoint is that at least half, at least 70% of the exterior walls of the structure have got to comply there. Outside of that, they don't look like anything.
Some of the stuff built in the last few years did not have to file, either they didn't, or they didn't file for permit. I mean, it hasn't been done that way.
Very possible they didn't, for a time. If no further discussion, I'll recommend approval of SPUD 1186.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 15. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 16 is an application to rezone 600 West John Kilpatrick Service Road from PUD 380 to PUD 1745.
Good afternoon, once again, David Box, 522 Colacord Drive. This is an application for a PUD that would allow for a, a mixed-use development consistent with what you, we've seen in that area along the turnpike. Obviously, we have Chisholm Creek to the west. That's been a tremendous success with commercial restaurants, entertainment-type uses, and so what we're attempting to do is something similar to this. This, this stretch of Oklahoma City is perhaps some of the busiest development, not only with Chisholm Creek, but, you know, with the recent addition of Costco. And so what we've tried to do is mirror the pud in large part to the uses that were allowed within the Chisholm Creek pud, and we have an opportunity here with the way that the pond is situated to create a nice amenity for this development. So we believe it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan as well as the surrounding development, as well as development trends in this area. There are four TEs I want to talk about briefly. I believe we agreed to all of them, but I want to make clear on TE number 2, that if, as long as it's just a pedestrian connection to the south, then, then we certainly agree to that. We do not agree to a vehicular connection to the south. The primary reason being, it is zoned in a PUD that allows for industrial development. We were approached by the individuals that, that own that, asking if they could connect through us with their industrial trucks. Given the nature of the, the high-end desires that we have for this development, having industrial traffic through our site to the service road, I believe to be inconsistent with what this commissioner would want for that type of development. So we do have access to our north. Unfortunately, the, the Costco site, the city, for whatever reason, did not require that to be a public street, and so although when you drive it, it feels like a public street, it is no more than a private drive, and at any time, they could simply put a barricade up. And so we cannot rely on access to the west. So we do have an existing access point that has a, forms a cul-de-sac that we'll be utilizing, and one additional access point. We do have a commitment to a specific plan, so you'll certainly see the development patterns and circulation patterns as we come forward prior to any building permit being issued. So with that, I'd have to answer any questions. Again, we agree with the TEs, just want to make clear, TE 2 is, is talking about pedestrian, not vehicular.
Is that water body going to stay there, or is it going to change?
It'll change. Mark Grubbs is civil engineer for the project, will work with the Corps. Yeah, the idea, as you can see here, is to expand it, make it bigger, and make it a true amenity for the development. Similar what Chisholm Creek has.
Kind of like what they already got.
Right.
I don't know how.
What's that? Hole with a water fountain?
Yes.
I don't know how in the world we permitted this property to, I guess it's not this property, but the Costco property, we developed the way it is without requiring the extension of that street. I, I really don't feel good about sort of how this property is accessed, and I recognize that there's not much to be done about it now. It's a little 20/20, but I'm not quite sure how we got here, and I think it's something we ought to think about and work through.
I don't disagree. I mean, it's through no fault of this property. I mean, this property has, has found itself landlocked from the east and west. It's a shallow property, though, and so we do have that access onto the Memorial or the, the service road, so we have adequate access. It's just a matter of, there's nothing we can do based upon past mistakes, oversights, whatever they may be.
Have you, have you talked to them about the possibility of shared access there?
Costco?
Yeah, are they willing to even discuss it?
We're happy to go try to talk. I don't know who, I don't know who at Mr. Costco, I don't know who that is, but we'll try.
Yeah, I, I guess that's on us, unless they didn't need anything from us.
This, the industrial tract, or you, you referenced the PUDs to the south that has the industrial traffic.
Yes, sir.
That is not, you're not talking about PUD 707, are you?
So it's, okay. So we may have some ability to have access. So the ball fields, it's, it's zoned in a manner that allows for commercial and industrial. The people that have the piece that isn't the ball fields approached Mr. Grubbs with their development plans and wanted to access for his industrial traffic through this site.
Through DBAT?
What's that?
Through DBAT from 122nd? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes. And the problem is, just with what, what we intend to develop here, the thought of industrial traffic is, I mean, if you could picture industrial traffic roaring through Chisholm Creek, it wouldn't be what it is. And so it, we believe it just would create a, an incompatibility of different types of uses.
I would also just point out, given your reference to the specific plan, you, you're going to have to have a specific plan for the first building permit, but that's it. So just, they won't, they'll be back the first time, but that's it, the way that it reads. So, and frankly, we're not requiring anything specific be included in that language, so it doesn't really matter, anyway. You know, when we talked about this earlier today, David, I, it would be great if we could preserve some sort of potential for connection. It sounds like maybe the Costco site, which ironically, I actually think is not great, because that intersection, the way the turnpike interacts with Memorial Road there is horrible. The traffic is already horrible, and I'm not sure how it could even be fixed, because that's Nate Clare's job to figure that out, as our resident traffic expert. Nate, I'll be looking for your comments in just a minute. But the only way to try to preserve some sort of relief to the site is some future connection to Northwest 122nd, because Memorial Road is one-way, and you come out and you've got a cross right in front of Main Event there. Is it Main Event, or is it the next one down? I think it's Main Event. Anyway, you've got a cross right. Anyway, you've got a cross right there to double back, and then you're going back into what is the worst part of the western interchange, because you have to make, you can't go straight through the light like you can at most of those corridors. Just explain this in case you're not familiar. You have to turn right, go up to another intersection, make a left to go down to get on the, I mean, it's really bad. It's really bad. So, I mean, it's your site, and I agree with you that it's really not the applicant's fault, and if you guys want to proceed here, but this is logistically really not ideal for this.
So by not agreeing to it, what we're doing is, we're preserving our ability to make the decision to connect. And so what we're, if you mandated we connect, well, then it forces this industrial traffic through. We're not foreclosing the ability to connect at a later time if, for whatever reason, there was something other than industrial development to our south. It's just, we don't want to mandate it so that it gives somebody else the absolute right to bring that industrial traffic through our site.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, I totally understand that. No one would want trucks driving through their retail asphalt parking lots, you know, day in and day out, over and over and over again. I totally get it. And it just easily could be that these softball fields, if they are to ever be redeveloped, could end up being residential, and the neighborhoods are going to come in here and throw a fit, because we've got a connection to this large-scale commercial development, right, that they don't want, so outside of pedestrian connections. So, I mean, it's a really tough deal. I just think, logistically, this site is very challenged, and this is a intensive retail development here. So I agree, it's not your fault, but I don't have a problem with it. I'm just concerned about it. So voice my concern.
I was promised traffic analysis by Commissioner Clare.
Well, I just want to clarify. I don't have the P E initials or the P T O E initials after my name.
You were on the Traffic Commission, you're our expert.
I mean, I think they're just kind of bound with the conditions. I mean, frontage road, with the frontage road and the turnpike, it's definitely not ideal, but it's, you know, high-development area up there, very popular right now, and I don't think you're going to see any improvements by the Turnpike Authority or ODOT anytime soon, so.
It's a mess. It's not your fault, so let's move on. Is there anybody here who wants to be heard on this item today? Commissioners?
I'll make a, excuse me, I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen, which is, getting back to it here. P U D seventeen forty-five.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve, item number sixteen. Cast your votes, please. We're not doing anything with the T E's other than just clarifying.
Right, we agree to them.
Two makes reference to pedestrian access. Okay. Cast your votes, please.
Thank you.
Item seventeen has been continued. Item eighteen is an application to rezone eight twenty-seven North Cemetery Road from C three to I two.
Is our applicant present?
What you're showing was continued to march.
That's seventeen?
Yeah, we're on eighteen now.
We're on eighteen. P C one oh six three six.
Dean Colita, Civil and Environmental Consultants, forty forty-five North O sixty-four Street. On this application, it's at Cemetery Road and Tenth. The, it's currently C three zoning, and the parcel that's adjacent to it, that's fronting on Cemetery Road, is also C three zoning. On this application, the applicant initially requested I two. After further discussion, we agreed that I one is the more applicable zoning for this area. Essentially, he's going to put in flex space with an office and small garage, so we can, you know, have, you know, service companies, landscaping, that type of stuff. So essentially, that's the, you know, we, I don't think there's any T E's, so we agreed to the I one zoning. Any questions we have to answer?
And that was staff's recommendation, so. Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this item today? Commissioners? Can I get a motion?
There's no further discussion. I'll make a motion to recommend approval on P C one zero six three six.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve, item number eighteen. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item nineteen has been continued. Item twenty is an application to rezone eighteen hundred Northwest Fifteenth Street from R one to S P U D eleven sixty-eight.
Good afternoon, David Box, five twenty-two Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. And I do have representatives from Lyric here with me. This is a bit of a unique application in that it is taking a lot in an area close proximity to the Plaza from R one to an S P U D that would allow the use of a parking lot. What we did in the S P U D is maintain the R one base, the hope being, at some point, there will be a traffic solution, or parking solution for the Plaza, and this lot will then be able to be redeveloped in a manner of single-family. To that end, what we're proposing for the surface of the parking lot is decomposed granite. So we're trying to do things to keep it more of a temporary-type use. In addition, you'll see a large tree at the southeast corner of the site that we're keeping in order to allow that to be an amenity for the next use for this property. I appreciate everybody's time in visiting with us about this. We've gone through several iterations of this. The Lyric is a special part of the Plaza. It's one of the anchor tenants. It means a lot to the success and the long-term viability of the district as a whole. And because of that, what you have in your staff report, or what has been provided to you, is a letter of support from the Plaza. There's also Representative Selena from the Plaza, if you have any questions of her. Though before I get into any more of the details, I do want the representatives from the Lyric to get up, explain why they're here, why we're in this position, and be able to answer any specific operational questions, and then I'll come back and talk to the Spud.
Hi, Michael Barron. I'm the producing artistic director, and I'm at ten twelve Northwest Thirty-Ninth Street, my home. So, Lyric, our mission is to serve all Oklahomans. And while we are located in the Plaza District, we're the largest professional arts organization in the state, and we serve patrons statewide. And my mission is to tell the stories of our residents statewide, meaning many are not, if not most of our shows, our patrons do not live in the Plaza District, but come from almost every county and actually neighboring states to come see our shows. For example, the next show we're doing is about the African-American community, and we fully expect members of that community to come to the Plaza District. And the things we like to guarantee are a ticket, a seat, and a guaranteed parking spot, because three hundred people have to show up to the show at that same time. And luckily, we're so successful in that people want to see live theater, want to hear their stories on stage, that almost every night and day, we have that group of people coming to our theater. The second show we're doing is about the Native American community, and we're going to fully expect to have Native American tribe members from all over the state come drive their car to the parking, to park in the parking lot, sorry, guaranteed at the Plaza District. Now, since I've been there for ten years, when it wasn't as busy, we were still able to accommodate everyone. We currently technically can accommodate everyone. What happened is, is that one of our guaranteed parking plots of land was sold to someone else besides us, without us giving the opportunity, and we have no control over that. So currently, the messaging for our patrons is, yes, we can give you a ticket, yes, we can give you a seat, but only the first hundred and fifty of you get a parking spot. The rest of you have to move over to a for-profit entity to have a safe off-road, off-street parking. I don't think that's fair or not-for-profit. I think there should be equal access to our shows and the stories. And this is, to us, the solution that we came up with. There isn't another piece of land that we could have bought, and we fully intend, if that other element of our parking situation gets resolved, to release this. We are not developers, developers are parking. It really is part of my mission to make sure that access to the shows, the theater for the citizens of the state is there. Yeah, are there any questions or thoughts? I'm not an advocate of parking, and I'm an advocate of public transportation, all that stuff. This is really about, the majority of our patrons actually come from the state.
Is this one bigger or smaller than the current lot that you lost?
It's comparable to what we do not own, but are using.
So you guys have the, on our site plan, which you can't see, but on here, this thing I'm looking at, you guys have got across the street from the Lyric offices, which there's, there's a parking lot there, that's yours.
Correct.
Right? And then to the west of the actual Lyric Theater building, are there's four lots. Two of these are the ones that are at issue. That's your parking, correct?
Correct.
And what other parking do you have in the area besides that?
The lot to the west of the production center, which is west of Indiana and Sixteenth, is divided into three. The one in the middle is not owned by us.
Right, but I'm, outside of those two?
Outside, none.
None.
That is it.
Okay.
If we had all of those in our ownership, we would be covered, but we do not.
Got it.
How, how long ago was the lot that you were relying on purchased?
Two thousand and sixteen.
Was, immediately after that purchase, did you guys have to stop guaranteeing spots in that lot?
No, because there wasn't, well, we should have, essentially, but because the owners of that section, there wasn't discussion, we just kind of essentially grandfathered ourselves in until the discussion was be able to had, which we instigated, and that discussion was to buy the lot, and that was not an option, so.
How is it used currently? Still parking, right?
Currently, yeah, it's still parking. We're still using it, but we are having to negotiate with this third party for the use of it. And under the law, it's very difficult for a not-for-profit to be in business or in any form with a for-profit company. And so it's a problem.
What's a, I mean, obviously, you guys don't control it, but what's your understanding of the intent for the future of the lot, do you know?
We do not know.
But so far, you've been able to use it?
Yes.
So it's made no impact yet?
Yet, that's correct. Well, that's not true, because currently, the owners of that lot are, will not allow us to use it, as we currently are, and we have been holding off as much as we can to...
So your patrons are not using it currently?
They are currently using it. Go ahead.
The distinction is, we can't say that these are guaranteed reserved for you.
But any, you guys don't have a lease?
Right? You guys don't have any contractual rights to be able to use the parking spaces that exist today?
Correct.
Which means that at any point, they could pull the rug out from underneath them and say, sorry, as of today, effective immediately, you guys can't use the parking lot. They could have a show that day.
That's right. So it's a precarious situation where, if it's open, great, but a lot of the people are traveling from afar, want to know that there's a guaranteed spot when they get there, not if you're lucky. Because the other, even though that's sold in twenty sixteen, some point in eighteen, the new Empire Slice Building was built. The individual that owns that building is who bought the portion that's at issue, and so he utilizes that for that, as well as Maples, Maples opened. And so you have all these new things coming on that just further give us fear that the ability to have reserved guaranteed parking for patrons is being stripped away.
Sure.
When Lyric's not performing, is this a public lot then?
It is.
I mean, it'll just turn into a pay-to-park there, or?
Currently, it's a free lot, and anyone can use it in the Plaza District.
Wait, are you talking about the new lot?
I'm talking about the lot we're talking about if, when, I mean, if you build this parking lot on a Tuesday afternoon or Sunday morning for brunch, and Lyric's not in session or in performance, it'll be a public lot?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And that's true of their lot now.
That's how the other one works.
That's exactly right. You can drive down there, and if they don't have, if they have an event, they have somebody standing there at the entrance, and if they don't, you can pull in there and park.
I do have someone signed up to speak. Michael Johnson, let's hear from him before we...
Hello, my name's Michael Johnson. I live at eighteen sixteen Northwest Fifteenth Street. This is a few blocks down from the proposed parking lot site. I'm here to oppose the permit for a parking lot. I know my neighbors next to me at eighteen twelve, Cody and Maria Yocum, also oppose this. We're concerned with this being a residential at one point. This is going to hurt our property values. No one wants to live next to a parking lot. Some other things, concerns, I noticed it's only twenty-seven spots. He was talking about three hundred spots. This isn't going to solve the problem. I was able to look over the plans. I'm not crazy about how the access to that lot comes through the residential street on Fifteenth. That's going to create a nightmare when people are trying to park. What was, some other things. Oh, and I also don't like the presidents that this is going to set. They even said it themselves, the solving the parking solution in the Plaza. If someone comes in and says, well, they were able to make a parking lot, well, now we just need to buy up a home, tear it down, and make it a parking lot. I do not want to see that happen. That's not why I moved to the area. So these are some of my concerns. And again, I just want to rate that I am in opposition of this.
I asked, how long have you lived in the area?
Two years now.
And so why did you move to the area?
I moved for work, and then when I was starting, trying to find where to live in Oklahoma City, the Plaza was, you know, really, I'm originally from the Dallas area, and it reminds me of actual Dallas, of like the M Streets, the Tudor-style homes, the Craftsman-style homes, and I want to be part of that vision of reviving that area. And we have done that. I say a parking lot hindering that. You know, people should be coming in and wanting to build homes, not parking lots.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Do you have any questions of Mr. Johnson? No, thank you.
If I could briefly, Mark, can you get that? So one of the, a couple things. Some of you wanted to see numbers, to show, you know, when they started offering patrons reserved parking spaces, you saw a fairly significant spike in attendance numbers. And so hopefully, we've been able to prove that up. One of the questions or requests was, along Indiana, the fear of headlights shining, if we would be willing to build a small masonry wall, three feet or so. The client is willing to do that. So you would have that along Indiana, so that would stop the ability of the headlights. We have been in contact with the individual that owns the home immediately to the west that would actually abut this. This person has been aware of our plans, has knowledge of what we're doing. That person's been in the loop this whole time. I understand the concern about precedent. I don't think there is ever any precedent in zoning cases. I think every zoning case stands on its own. I wish there was precedence. It'd make my job a little easier, just to walk in and say, you did it two weeks ago, you need to do it again. Each case is going to be analyzed on its own set of facts, its own merits, all the details that go into it. I think here, we have a unique situation. This is not an intent of a developer to try to come in and create a paid parking lot. This is simply an important tenant to the district that is trying to maintain a current level of parking that they're able to offer to patrons. There has been lots of fights in this area over the last, I don't know, couple years that have played out here on zoning cases. I don't think you've ever seen, that I can recall, the Plaza Board take the step to actually issue a letter of support. What you probably haven't seen, a letter of support came in within the last couple hours before the media started, from Steve Mason. Steve Mason is a very active developer here, as well as other parts of the city, and he has issued a letter of support. In the letter of support, he talks about, you know, the problems with cars, and the problems with parking, and he's not a guy that wants parking lots, but recognizing what, you know, Lyric means to the Plaza, ultimately voiced his support for this. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are of me. If not, I do want Selena to speak briefly from the Plaza perspective.
Hello, Selena Skorman, seventeen fifty-one B, Northwest Sixteenth Street. Good afternoon. I think it was only a matter of time before I was standing in front of you talking about parking in the Plaza District. I've had the pleasure of attending some of the planning commission meetings the past few months, and I think inevitably, even if the item isn't even about the Plaza District, this topic comes up. So it's not something we take lightly as a district, and it's not something we take lightly as a board. So I am the executive director of the Plaza District, and I am here speaking on behalf of the Plaza Business. of the Plaza Business Alliance Board of Directors. We understand that we get a lot of complaints about parking. We hear you. I personally get them all the time, anytime I introduce myself and what I do. And I wish it were a black and white subject with an easy solution, but it isn't. And every time I come here, if it's maybe, actually, the past month, it was in opposition to a spud that was proposing a parking lot. But luckily, I don't have to come up, because usually Commissioner Highsmith echoes everything that we're feeling. But this time, the spud is different. So, I think of the Hebrew phrase, Manish Tana HaLaila Hazah, what makes this night any different from any other night, what makes this spud different from any other spud. A few things, I think, that have already been echoed, but it's not on 16th Street, so it's not on the main drag of the Plaza District. And it's free and open to the public, and we are always advocating for shared parking, especially that without a price barrier, because we don't want anyone to not be able to access the Plaza District and everything that Lyric's doing, and everything that the stores are doing that benefit the community. But the main thing is that it's Lyric, and that is our anchor nonprofit, and we would not be here today if it were not for Lyric. They were absolutely the catalyst for revitalization. If this were any other spud, and as we've shown previously, we would oppose it. But we trust Lyric. We have a 20-year relationship with them. We trust their intentions with this parking lot, and we want them to be successful, because if they're not successful, our district probably will not be successful. And so, we think they're making all the right decisions with this parking lot, and we think it is a reasonable ask, especially considering that their overall ticket sales have doubled since 2015, and they are experiencing a lot of growth, as is the entire district. So, I think we don't feel the need to park all of that growth, and we are always encouraging multimodal transportation, but we think as a board that it is, it is reasonable to try and help them with some of this growth. So, yes, thank you for your time, and I'm on hand if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions? Thank you.
Briefly, there are, the recommendation is submitted as an alternative, and if approved, there are three technical evaluations. So, I need to address A. We don't agree to A. We do agree to B and C, but on C, we agreed to improve the alley to the extent shown on our exhibit. The alley does not exist anymore. As you can see from the rendering, when you go to the west, everybody has just fenced to the middle of the alley. So, we will improve the alley as shown on this, but we're not going to improve the entirety of the alley. There is no alley.
How would you suggest that we articulate that into the technical evaluation, should the application be recommended for approval?
I think you can reference the exhibit. It'll be improved in a manner consistent with the exhibit.
Well, if you're ready, I've got a lot of thoughts on it, of course. I think most of you know that I'm not a huge fan of parking. I think, especially in this area, I think the popularity of it is untethered to the parking issue. I think, I think the popularity of this district relies on a messy vitality. It relies on density. The more that we start to sprinkle in, you know, little surface parking areas, the more we change the character of what the Plaza is. I totally, I get it. I think the Lyric, obviously, you know, you guys have done a ton. You've helped the district revitalize. You're a nonprofit with a great mission. You guys do great stuff. This has nothing to do, like, my views on this have nothing to do with it. I have to divorce myself from that, because to me, that's where, you know, you guys are going to start pulling on my heartstrings, where this, to me, is, it's a land use issue. I think it's irrespective of who's bringing the application forward. And I just can't imagine, Selena even mentioned it. We've denied, we denied one, I think, in the last meeting we had. Or, well, sorry, we changed, we fundamentally changed their proposal. So, we made them eliminate the option for a parking lot, which was their main goal.
That was on 16th, correct?
This was on 16th, sure. But I would almost argue that it's worse the further into the neighborhood we go, because the impact, as, as one citizen who's come forward has said, is really, you know, the negatives happen whenever it's next to homes. That's actually, like, it makes me, you know, feel a little bit worse about an approval on this item. Irrespective of all that, you know, before I get too far ahead of myself, some of the questions that I had for Lyric were in, were particular to attendance records, right? I was very curious to know, has, you know, how has attendance been since the Plaza area started its revitalization? And it appears that we broke records every year. Currently, as my understanding is, sellout every show. If that's the case, and, you know, the lot was purchased in 2016, I understand that there might become a point where it's not available anymore, but I, I don't, I, there's no evidence for me to hang my hat on currently that there's been a negative impact. I think, just like anything in the Plaza, it's, it's the vitality of the Plaza that brings people there. And I would also argue that although the Lyric's been there from the beginning, and they've helped catalyze that revitalization, the momentum of the Plaza itself has also reciprocated and allowed the Lyric to reach the levels of attendance that they get these days. I don't think, you know, if we removed all of the rest of the Plaza, that the Lyric would have the same amount of success. And so, for me, it's about the health of the entire district. And the health of the entire district, to me, again, we erode the more that we approved these types of parking applications. I asked this before, and I'll ask it again, mostly, you know, I know there's not an answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway, because I just challenge people to find me a district with the character of the Plaza that we would, that we would say has ample parking, doesn't exist. You can't have a Plaza and have ample parking. Those are two, they're totally different things. You have a different place than the Plaza if you have ample parking for all the businesses. So, all of that said, there's obviously a lot of support for this. I've struggled with it since the beginning, because I, you know, like I said, I'm totally sympathetic. I know the backstory. I feel bad about, you know, what's happened. I mean, I didn't have anything to do with it, but I feel, I feel bad about it, and I wish this, you know, we're not, I wish we didn't have to be...
So does Lyric.
But I still, you know, this is, you know, this is one of those things for me. This is like, very important stuff to me. And although, and I'll admit this too, because you've got to admit your mistakes, although I was one of those that voted in favor of the parking lot south of the mule, I've changed my mind. I view that now as a mistake that I made during that period, and I wish, I wish I hadn't supported it. But I can't support everything into the future just because I made one mistake either. We're supposed to learn from these things and try to do better. And, you know, just to, just try to imagine in your head, a place like the Plaza surrounded, and I'm not trying to be, you know, I'm not trying to embellish too much here, but just with the character of what might happen to this corner. And I think, I think, again, I think we talk about, in that case, creating a different kind of place that does not protect the character of what it is today. So...
So, briefly...
I'd really love to hear from the rest of the commission, but that's, that's where I'm at currently. That's not saying how I'm going to vote, but those are my struggles.
Actually, I have a question for Mr. Johnson, if you don't mind. You've lived there for two years, and help me, I'm looking at an aerial of the, just kind of an overall, not what you're seeing on the screen. You live west or east of the parking, the proposed parking lot? How far?
About four, the, four lots down.
Four lots down?
Yeah, like, I pass up every day, yeah.
As a resident, as a stakeholder, how often do you have people parked in front of your house?
So, that's a good question. It's not a daily occurrence. It's on big events, so usually when there's something going down, maybe, I would say, on a typical Friday, some people park in the street.
Right.
I don't see the parking as big of an issue, as everyone's saying, other than, I understand a little bit better why they want the parking lot to have that guaranteed 300 tickets, but I thought...
I'm just asking from your vantage point. Forget Lyric for a second, honestly?
Sure.
Just forget them, because I want to try and make this objective to some extent here.
Right. I honestly don't see the parking as big of an issue.
If the parking were to continue to proliferate, though, in front of your home, would you, would you consider that as a negative impact? I mean, in terms of being a resident and you using your home, would you consider that a negative impact?
I already, I think everyone there is kind of used to people parking on the street, so as far as me backing up, like, it's a given. It's some, and we know, you know, maybe a Friday night, a Saturday night, it's going to fill up, maybe it won't. Were able to back out? I think most people are. Where you do see issues is, usually when both sides start filling up, only one car can fit down. That's like, one of the concerns I was kind of saying to earlier about the access from the residential street. Guarantee, all those people are going to start turning down, because they're like, "Oh, there's a parking lot." Well, they don't know if that's built or not. So, I do see now a hassle with people trying to find that parking in there. So, I live there. I do have the luxury of walking to all the businesses when we want to go and enjoy the Plaza, but I just don't see the parking as big of an issue. And it doesn't bother us when it fills up. That's just part of living there. And I think people who want that urban lifestyle move there for part of that. Like I said, I grew up in the actual Dallas city limits in Lower Greenville. If people are familiar with that, it's a very similar vibe and feel. People fill up the streets. You don't find parking lots down there either.
Yeah.
People usually figure it out, so...
I, of course, love to add a little bit of my own thoughts to that. I think, you know, Ward 6 is fundamentally different than, than the majority of the other wards. Obviously, Ward 2 and Ward 7 have some very urban areas to them, but I think generally, Ward 6, like, the people that move into this area understand that it's not suburbia. There's a difference to these neighborhoods. You are opting to live in areas that are much more active. But I would also say, anywhere in the city, you know, on-street parking is not a guarantee. These are public spaces. It's okay and expected that somebody, any other member of the public that also pays taxes, might come and park next to the curb. And so, while a lot of homeowners might believe they should have the expectation to, you know, be the ones to park in front of their house, but, you know, there's no right to that.
No. And I, and I, and I'm not saying that there is, I just like the, it's interesting to hear from someone who actually lives in it every day, because we have this debate, and I think where I agree with you is, I can't name a district where there's, you know, a lot of vibrance and all that, and you have plentiful parking. It's always an issue. I also think it's a balance, and what I'm the most troubled by in this application is the, is the lot being, I wish it were one, I wish it were right across the street on 15th. I wish it backed right up to that. In like, this idealistic world, that's how it would work. It's not going to work like that, because the real truth here is that, which is great for you, Mr. Johnson, everyone thinks their property here now is worth $250 a square foot for the dirt. And so, the opportunity to acquire parcels that are better suited for this, that accommodate something that is a unique venue, which is what I think, trying to be objective here is what is different, is you have, you have an applicant who has a defined customer base that is automobile-driven, that's been in this district 20 years, that has to have parking. So, their choices are to try to go out in this area and find something to accommodate their need, and I'll point out to you, as they have, and I'm curious if there's a way we can make this even more certain, that this is a temporary solution to their problem. They don't view this as a permanent solution to their problem. They're not seeking to rezone this property outside R1. They're not seeking to change it from a residential use. They're seeking to change it temporarily for the purposes of satisfying their need. And to me, that's a distinction. It's an objective distinction. Whereas the lot you referenced, that we, that I can't remember when that came through, but is very permanent. And in fact, is very permanent without the intent at the outset that it would be very permanent in a roundabout way. So, they're being very straightforward about what they need here, and what I'm sympathetic to is the balance between people like Mr. Johnson, who, to his credit, says, "It doesn't bother me," but also that other people who are driving in, that are destination-based, us Ward 8 folks, we've got to have someplace to put our car when we get there. And if I'm coming to a Lyric event, and I paid for a ticket, and I've got a parking space, like, that's why I'm coming there. It's going to erode that. So, I think it's a legitimate concern. I just think the balance here is whether or not this lot is an appropriate location, and the reason that I'm okay with it, at least for my seat, is two things. One, it's temporary. They're designing it to be as such, and I'm curious if we can further make that the case, which we can talk about. But the other thing is just that, there's not optionality here. It's not as if they could go get one that's closer, or they can get one that's better suited to 16th Street, which I would love to see, but you can't do that. It's, the district got away from itself, in a good way, in a good way. So, I will also say, if this were an application that were for a permanent rezoning of a lot to a parking lot, I would not support it. I would not be in favor of it.
Sure, but, I mean, as, as we talk about all the time, zoning goes with the land.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't. I mean, it does if he came in here and said, "I want a C3," right? And then, so he could build a parking lot as a principal use, and that's that. Then, all of a sudden, the parking lot goes away, and here comes, you know, a pub on the corner of 15th Street. But instead, what you have, which is precisely why they've constructed the application the way they have you, you have an S P U D that has a base of R1 that allows for a parking lot, that they attempt to even limit further. But, and that's, and that's what I'm curious about, is can they limit it even further, which is, said parking lot should be required to utilize permeable paving. So, they're not even going to use hard surface part, they're not, there's no concrete going down here outside of what's required probably for curb and gutter, or whatever it is. So, they're doing everything they can to demonstrate that this is a temporary use of the property, while maintaining the single-family zoning.
I would like just to say something about the, I do appreciate a lot of the effort they're going through to make this a better solution. One thing, my personal experience in life, things are never temporary. This, I have the feeling, this will be permanent. The businesses are growing. They already mentioned Empire, Maples. What if they want parking? They're going to be looking, you know, some of these lots, some of these homes can be revived, some of them are going to be torn-down lots. And now, well, they need parking. And maybe they're not selling a ticket to go with it, but they've been, it's only temporary until the parking solution is solved. It's not going to be solved.
I totally agree.
I mean, I was looking at the numbers. It takes a lot of space to get all, not many parking spots. I think that's like, .2 acres was 27, and if they need that, times 10, you know, that's over two acres of residential lots they would need just to fill up 300 parking spots. So, I just, like I said, I appreciate what they're trying to do. I just don't see this being a solution. I don't see it being temporary, and I just see it as leading to more parking lots, which, again, that's not what people are going to the Plaza for.
I'm obviously in the business, and I find the same thing. I find temporary solutions have a tendency of becoming permanent. All the time, we do a lot of phasing work for our clients that want to build out a little piece, come back and do the rest. The rest almost never happens. You know, these, these ideas, they're, they're done in good faith. I trust that. But there's, you know, the reality is much closer, I believe, to what you just said. So...
I think, if I could, the reality is sort of somewhere in between, I think. The application as it's currently structured does not provide a mechanism for determining at some point in the future when this parking is no longer needed. I can't quite picture how we might legally do that. I think the fact that they have kept their R1 base as close as they can get to, you know, a... know, a promise, it's, you know, not a guarantee, but a promise, that they view it as a temporary solution. And I think the one thing that all of this, and my initial response to the application when it was presented to me, is it is very clear that the plaza has gotten away from us, you know? It was seen initially, and let's give Lyric their due. They were absolutely the foundational impetus for that redevelopment. It would not have happened without their buy-in and the statement that they're moving there made. And the city has made some, you know, corresponding investment in that to help it along, and it's not inconsiderable. A lot of time and energy and attention has been put in to making the plaza a success. However, on the front end, I think we were perhaps naively hopeful that it would just, you know, make it. And what it's done is, you know, blossom and burgeoning, and it's outgrown its boundaries, and we are dealing with it on a lot-by-lot basis, and that's just simply insufficient. We are going to have to come up with a vision, if not a master plan, for the district. It is fostering development, commercial, residential, and, you know, all due respect, people in this town drive. Do we want to build for the future, and the future we want? Yes, we absolutely do. People still drive.
Let me make...
People come to the Lyric from a long way away.
Let me make one point.
And wait just a minute, please. Nobody's talking about ample parking here. What we're talking about, even in this application, is kind of a minimal contribution to the parking problem. That parking problem is not going to go away. It's not going to disappear. I think the question of whether we want that parking on 16th or not is a valid question. I think it is troubling to see the development along, at least troubling to me, the plaza, along 16th Street, to bleed into the neighborhoods without any kind of thoughtful process for how that's going to be accommodated, where we want to see what. But the idea that it's going to continue to grow and continue to be successful, and, you know, that it's going to get bigger and better, if those two things are synonymous, without parking is nonsense, in my view.
My point is, there is parking.
Yeah, there is some parking. There's not enough parking, and I take that bet every day of the week.
There's a great, I believe it was a video that Kristen Vales did whenever she was director of the Plaza Board. And it was her walking from one end of the plaza to the other. And she overlaid that with the same distance from the edge of Penn Square's parking lot to the front door of Macy's. And can you guess which was longer? The point being that we're stressing out over how, you know, how we're going to provide parking for Lyric Theater, when those same, you know, and I understand, I've heard that there's an elderly, that I guess the attendants were mostly elderly, totally get it. Not true?
I would say this isn't about elderly. This is really about also people of color that don't live in the area. They really, the experience of coming to Lyric Theater, they have no idea what the Plaza District is. You're all assuming that everyone outside Oklahoma City knows that the Plaza District is a hit place to live. Most of our patrons have never been to Lyric or the Plaza District. They're coming to see live theater for the first time about their own experience and culture and community. And so, that's why I think we are special, and that we need parking for our patrons to come see the show. Performing arts organizations always have guaranteed parking. The Civic Center has guaranteed parking. There's a huge garage that houses, some of the agencies right below it that we use. A movie theater, you go to Tittletown, you have guaranteed parking. It's about the nature of being in live performance when everyone has to come at the same time. And for me, I mean, and I respect our neighbors, and I live very close to that area, too, I'm not so concerned about him. I'm concerned about people not like him coming to see one of the best performing arts organizations in the country. That his mission is to not do theater for entertainment, but as for our soul. And it's important for them to have a secure place to park, to see our show, and then decide, oh, I'm going to spend my other money to buy a T-shirt, go to a restaurant, go to a bar. This is, I think it's a totally different motivation for this lot and why we need it than anyone else. That's my view.
Sure, I'm sure.
And yes, of course, there's elderly, but...
What I'm trying to point out is that the size, you know, the distance to the lot, having it all aggregated in one spot, being able to point to them and say, that's where you go park, that's all nice. But my point is that there is ample parking. The on-street parking. What the concern is, right, is that you're...
You're seeing there's ample parking on the street at the Plaza District right now, at 7 o'clock at curtain time.
Well, I believe our neighbor that was here said that only intermittently do people park in front of his, and he's on 15th.
He's not on 16th Street.
Yeah, he's on 15th, and he's...
On 15th, exactly. And I'm saying that that is public parking.
So, it's okay for an elderly couple, even if they're not elderly, a family from another part of the state to arrive in the Plaza District, look at the street, go, I don't know where to go, maybe I'll park my car in front of someone's house, then figure, that's all right?
That's exactly what I'm...
And hope I get to the curtain in time and get made to...
It's like, when I get pulled over, I have one thing, just one thing, I apologize. I, you know, I got pulled over speeding once. I'm sure everybody has. So, I, you know, the cop comes up and he asks me, and he's like, you know, why are you speeding? Well, I'm late. Well, you should have left earlier. It's an easy answer. To me, like, I get it...
Please. I think we've discussed the aspect of this enough.
I understand.
Does anybody else have anything else they want to add, questions, concerns?
I'm the old man on here, and I remember the Plaza District from 1981 and 2 and 3, and you wouldn't send your enemy to the Plaza District. And what you guys have done down there has been amazing, amazing, and it's a great place to go. I mean, I live almost in Newcastle. I'm so far in South Oklahoma City, so getting down there is not frequent for me. Finding parking down there is always a nightmare, even if it's 10 o'clock on a Tuesday morning. Not really, but I'm for this application. I appreciate the fact that you put it in the words that you did, that it reverts back to residential when you solve your problem. So, that's, I'm not going to drone on and on. That's just how I feel about this.
Yeah, in Norman, they'd rope it off and leave it grass and let everybody park there when they needed to, but, you know, we're not Norman.
Is there, I mean, is there anything that we can do legally, in the confines of the SPOD, to make the use of this parking any more temporary? I don't mean in terms of putting a timeframe. I just mean in terms of strengthening that language of tying it to something. Is there anything that we could do to restructure this application that would make it? Because here's all I'm saying, guys. We can sit here and we can talk about how great the Lyric is, and just to be clear, if it were okay for me to just subjectively vote for this because I support your mission, I would do that. Unfortunately, it's not, because right after we approve this, someone's going to get this application, they're going to see it, and they're going to want a parking lot, too. And when they come down and they stand right there, I have to be able to explain to them why objectively their application is different. So, all I'm trying to get to is if there's anything else I can do to encourage my fellow commissioners to support to do, to make this that much more stringent on them, so that if somebody else comes forward and asks for the same parking lot, we can look at them as an objective body and say, this is why we can't support this application.
Can I suggest one thing, not as a legal condition or limitation? And I'm curious to hear what our useful counsel will have to say about that, because I haven't imagined what that would be yet. But one thing I would like to see is that instead of a masonry wall being built around this parking lot, that a green wall, or something that's a little less temporary than a masonry wall, be what provides that screening from headline intrusion, which I'm absolutely all in favor of, you know, screening off and limiting. But I'd like to see something that's not quite as, you know, there's nothing that says temporary like a masonry wall.
And we're fine with that. I mean, to be candid, we did the wall to hopefully get Commissioner Highsmith's vote. It appears that to be fleeting at this point, which is fine. So, yes, I think a live wall is more temporary in nature than a masonry wall. So, we don't care either way, is our point. If a live wall is the desire of the commission, then so be it.
I assume we can actually do that and have it, you know, be functional and permanent-ish, you know, and actually do its job. So, I think we have standards, and I feel confident of that.
It's going to require irrigation, which...
Absolutely, it will. So, tell me, tell me. Well, we probably need to do a little bit more research, but what I think this sounds like is, it's kind of like a sunset clause, where we've talked about before, that you can't, like, have your, have a part of your zoning automatically revert back to, like, R1, without having to go through the process of your notice provisions like in a normal zoning case. I don't know if this is different by just eliminating one use, but it kind of sounds like the same thing as reverting back to R1, and so that would be my concern about it.
They could build the parking lot, come back and rezone it back to R1, and it would be a non-conforming use, right?
It is, it is zoned, to be clear, it is...
Would that work?
They could quit using it as a parking lot, and that's fine. They don't have to build it as a parking lot. What I'm saying is that would...
Huh? I mean, at that point, I guess it's legally non-conforming. You run into some issues with the case, all the deals with legally non-conforming uses and how they expire, and we're fine with anything.
I'm comfortable with the application, frankly, the way it is. I'm just trying to be super respectful of the fact that somebody is going to take this case and come in here.
And let's be very clear, no houses are being torn down to build parking lots here.
Yeah.
You know, that's...
And frankly, you know, even though Ms. Johnson is our only protester here today, I mean, I want you to understand that we're, I'm super sensitive to your arguments, and I don't want you to think that this is all falling on deaf ears.
I do want to stress that I'm the only one here today. I have talked with my other neighbors, and that was one thing I did want to counter to some of the things they had to say. You know, they made an example of, well, a movie theater is going to have a parking lot, other commercial stuff's going to have a parking lot. That's true, because it's not a residential area. This is different than those places. The convention center, well, yes, is focused towards parking and the commercial side of things. Plaza not, isn't necessarily built just for business. It was done also with residential things.
Well, right. It's worse, because it's all mashed together.
Yeah.
But to Ace's point, that's also what makes it great, what makes it unique, but it's what makes it a disaster for us.
And the other thing that I'm a little concerned hearing about this, everyone's concerned about the temporary when they resolve their issue. What's the solution? Do they even have, does anyone have the imagination right now? What is the solution that's going to turn this back into a residential?
Well, it's, what's going to keep it residential is the way that it's zoned, and if, again, if it were...
But it would always be a parking lot, is my point. Is anyone going to take the effort to put it into a home as a residential? If someone were to have that empty lot, they would build a home.
At $370 a foot, which is what stuff is currently selling for and listed for in your district, I assure you that if this is available for sale as a residential lot, it'll get scooped up like that.
And that's part of my, that's part of what I'm saying, because the owner is going to be lyric for parking. And they only let it be residential, or, you know, whatever it is, when their parking solution is solved. What is that solution? How is, we're already talking about, there is no parking. There's only going to be more parking. I just don't ever see it not being a parking lot.
Well, I think that's a fair question, Mr. Box.
We're talking about...
What is the plan to make this a temporary solution? Where do you go from here to try to find a more permanent solution?
Well, I mean, the lot that got away is something to try to go after and exert pressure where pressure can be.
Do you believe that's realistic? Do you believe...
I don't know.
That there's a solution there?
I don't know. I don't know. It is a, I mean, it's an unfortunate position. I mean, we're trying to do everything we can in this application to make it less permanent. You know, the decomposed granite, keeping the giant tree, the live wall, that's the route we go. I mean, when we're open to ideas, the problem with the way that, you know, the city attorney has interpreted sunset clauses, which I frankly agree with, you can't put those in there. I find those to be unconstitutional, and so, we're kind of left with the tools we've got. But what you have in the applicant is a nonprofit entity. Other applicants perhaps wouldn't be not-for-profit, and so, it would be a different scenario, which is also one of the limiting factors as to why they can't go acquire the lots that slipped away.
What about instances where we make, you know, use as accessory to another use? Right?
Except that here, they want the ability to allow the public to use the lot during the times when they're not in use.
Yeah, so it can actually be a public service, yeah.
I don't look for...
Yeah, that would be the...
Do we have to have that? Do we care that much? I mean, Selena does. Do you care that much about the public being able to use it? That one of the ways to do it is it makes it accessory to Lyric's only.
No, I mean, the public's been using our lots for 20 years, and we're to the bottom, and we're happy to continue to do that.
I think the question is, would you be equally happy to limit it to Lyric patrons alone?
If they use it as well.
Yeah. And that's what he's asking you.
Would the PBA still be in support of it, then?
Uh-uh.
We may lose Selena with that solution.
Yeah, and you know what? We might. We might lose the support of the board, and frankly, respectfully, I'm not sure that's determinative for me, because I think we're at a point here where we have to pick between the lesser of two evils. And to me, the lesser of two evils is making a solution here where we can objectively in the future, when people come in here and they want a parking lot, we have the ability to say no.
Make that distinction.
To make that distinction. I mean, with all due respect to their board, it's not determinative for me. There's plenty of people in the Plaza District to show up when they don't like something. That is, that much we know. But this is, that's the thing that bothers me the most, is the precedent that it sets. That's, and, but I am desperately trying to find a way to fully support the application. And for me, if I knew that if it changed away, because the issue, right, what Counselor Box is saying, is that if Lyric had a problem and sold that lot to Empire Slice House, ta-da, parking forever, forever, right? And that's Ace's point. So, the lesser of the two evils to me is to create that, to make that use accessory to another use, so that if that use lapses, that's, that would be the condition that it falls back on. That's a better solution than a permanent parking lot. That, you know, again, with all due respect to Mr. Johnson's point, at $370 a foot, I assure you, if as long as it's zoned residential, somebody's going to build a house there, you can bet that. There were four developers in this room that built in this area today that would take that lot gladly. So, no problem there.
You know, and I would say this to Mr. Johnson. It's not an easy solution. It's not a short-term solution. But in terms of, you know, what we can do, if not the applicant, what we can do to make it temporary, is to find a better solution for the parking issues on the plaza. And I think, honestly, we've got to do that. The development down there and the growth down there, I believe, simply demand that we come up with some kind of coherent, it may be too much to expect in such diverse ownership as it is, that the property owners down there are going to get together and come up with a master plan for the plaza, but we sure can. I think what we do have in terms of policies and practices in place for the plaza is too narrow, it's too small, it's outgrown itself, so...
Well, you, we have very limited tools at our disposal here, and a lot of things that are really outside of our control in terms of how the area, I mean, the area is going to keep on developing. It's developed, we've seen, how many applications have been through here in the past two, three months, right? months, right? So, and that's, again, that's my fear of the precedent, and I personally would be much more comfortable, right? If someone else comes in, then we've created a principal use parking lot with a base zone of R1, then we've created an SPOD that ties the use of a parking lot to lyric theaters' use. That's an easier thing for us to defend. And if, and if it means that the public can't use the lot, well, the public doesn't have the lot anyway, and to Ace's point, the parking in front of houses, and Mr. Johnson, nobody cares. I mean, I'm a suburban guy, so I don't, you know...
Let's look back. Is that, is that a functional option for this property? It's not next door, it's not across the street, it's not, I mean, do you believe legally that we can tie this as an accessory use to the lyric?
I hate to say that just right now without looking at it, but I mean, that does sound like that's something that could possibly be done, but I don't know. Since this is an SPOD, I'd hate to say that for certain.
I'm sorry, you hate to say what?
Oh, I just said, I hate to say that for certain, that we could tie it to the lyric theater.
We're fine with adding that language.
But is that language legal? I know you're fine with it, but is it actually something that we can...
We can sign it that way, put language in the SPOD that is required to be signed, lyric parking, you know, only, and they will manage it and...
I'm saying if we were to put that inside the PUD, is that legal? Like, is that...
And we enforce it.
Yeah, exactly. I know you're cool with it.
Legal until a court says it's not, so...
Oh, yeah.
I, I think maybe one option would be if we are so inclined to approve it with those, subject to that condition, and between now and City Council, you can straighten it out, or we'll see it again.
And I'm sorry, I don't mean, I mean, honestly, to the other commissioner, I don't mean to monopolize this conversation, I'm just, I'm talking out loud. I don't know if you guys have other thoughts, or we just want to call a vote, or whatever, but I'm, like, I'm...
So with that being said, what measures are taken to make sure nobody parks there unless it's a lyric theater event?
No, there's not, really, now they have a, you know, a thing that goes down on the, on the 16th Street one, but nothing on there. Blackwelders is, it's a big lot to the east, you know, there's no way to really...
I'm not sure I care. So, I mean, I'm not sure that that's, I'm not sure that I care, but what I care about is that we, if we approve it that way, that's the way we approved it. And most applicants can't agree to that standard, and it's not a principal use parking lot, so we haven't approved one. And that's what I'd like to, I mean, I think, you know, and again, if you disagree, tell me, but that, I think that we're better off here, there is precedent in these things as far as I'm concerned, because everything here has to be looked at objectively. This is an objective way to solve a problem without opening the door for five more of these applications, right?
Well, I think I care a little bit more than that. I mean, would you be able to gate it or put, you know, an arm down, or would you be able to actually limit the access to it in an effective way? I, you know...
I would just add one more thing on this. I do think as, you know, if we're saying we think an accessory lot is more attractive, I don't think that that would necessarily prevent a business from seeing an opportunity to say, oh, well, if it's only for my business, you know, what am I scared of? I'll still, I'll gladly bring a lot to Planning Commission and say, sure, this is an accessory lot that I'm doing, you know, over wherever. I don't think that would bother them as long as...
I would argue we would have more of an objective stance to deny an application based on a variety of other factors by doing it that way as opposed to approving a parking lot as a principal use on 15th Street. That's my opinion. I'm not saying I'm right, I'm saying that's my opinion.
I don't care. I think at this point, I'm, I'm in a losing position. So I also don't think if we get to a point of motion, I'd prefer maybe one of my fellow commissioners make one, so we save some time.
And I think that's where we are. I think I'm ready for a motion.
I'll, I'll take a swing at one if we want to move it along and see where we are. I need a clarification on the TEs. So you said TE, what would be 2A here for the sake of everybody's looking at their application, restrict development within the confines of the subject area, why can't you agree to that?
It's a really wide right-of-way there, and so we will get a revocable permit to have, a piece of the parking stall will be in the right-of-way.
So is it agreeable to staff to strike that TE, or is there a preference to amend it?
Strike it.
Just, I'm not sure that there, is there enough room for the green wall?
Yes.
With the, the sidewalks right on the curb, and then you would have the wall and then the parking.
We have room for the green wall or the masonry, we couldn't do both. But there is room for the live wall, Johnson laid it out.
Are you comfortable? You want to change it some way? What's...
Well, I mean, we recommend a denial, so...
I understand.
Or approval.
It does say or, to be clear, Jeff. Okay, so, and then the second TE, the parking lot you showed me at the city's landscape board, and you're good with that?
Yes.
And then the three is improve alley in a manner consistent with the attached exhibit.
C, but yes.
Exhibit C?
No, you said number three, it's actually two.
Well, I know, but...
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, I will make a recommendation of approval to City Council on SPOD 1168, amending the master design statement to reflect that the automotive parking lot is a principal use will be an accessory use to lyric theater. Is that, Susan, can you...
I will, I will say that I will research that between now and council...
Counsel.
Because I don't know that you can, zoning goes with the land, I don't know if you can limit it to a specific owner or, I mean, I don't know, I'll just have to look at that to see if there's a way we can do that bit.
Okay, all right. But for our purposes, you're comfortable with that? Okay? Subject to the technical evaluations as outlined in the staff report, striking TE 2A, accepting TEB, accepting, and amending TE 2C to say, improve alley in a manner consistent with the exhibit.
Requiring a living wall, that's not in here, so...
Oh, and amending, I'm sorry, and amending the MDS for, maybe your site proof screening?
Yes.
Site proof screening to provide for a green wall and a little of a masonry wall.
I would like to add one thing. It sounds like, as you guys are talking, it's going to be voted for approval. If one thing maybe we could also add on, or you guys would consider, taking away the access off of 15th and moving both accesses Indiana would be, I think, beneficial for the people living on 15th Street. It's going to be taking away that traffic of people trying to get in. That, that has a small radius for people to turn in already, and that's something I do experience all the time, coming home or going out on Fridays, people coming in at that intersection is a pain. And you add the access of people coming in and out for parking, I think will cause issues as well. So that's one, one thing maybe hopefully you guys will think about adding on. Thanks.
I think that, that kind of complicates the circulation pattern.
I agree.
I mean, since we're limiting the act, the use of property to just the times, basically, if the lyric is in operation, I, Tam, help us out.
So we purposely have restricted the driveway off of 15th, so it's an entry only, it'll be signed as such, so there won't be anybody exiting 15th. All the exit would go out on Indiana. That provides a better circulation traffic-wise. And we can add that language if it to...
I think it's pretty evident. I've got a motion, I'm going to let my motion stand.
I'll second your motion.
I have a motion, a second to approve item number 20 with the amendments and conditions recited. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Item 21 has been...
Before we go on, and I know this probably doesn't help, but we really do appreciate you taking the time to come down here today and to share your thoughts with us and your views, and I want you to know that we do take very seriously the impact of development in many ways on the neighboring and surrounding residential areas. It's a tough balance, but we're kind of doing the best we can.
I just wanted to say as well, I do appreciate that everyone did put a lot of thought into it, and I do still appreciate Lyric's taken above approach. Still not pleased with it. It is 27 spots, and I just hope that you guys consider, because I guarantee you, you're going to have other applications for parking lots, and I will be back here, and apparently I need to come with more of the neighborhood. I was just the only one who has a more flexible work schedule to get here, but...
I understand, and it's an effort to take the time to come down here.
And I just hope that this is it. I've spent, you know, a lot of money to renovate a house there, now I have to go buy a parking lot in the near future. That would have impacted my decision. I know it's going to impact other people's decisions, so please, in the future, let's really consider, there's going to be more parking lot, I just know it. I am a civil engineer myself, so I understand this stuff better than the average person, so, thank you, but...
One of the few ways to make a really good impact here is to bring a lot of people.
Well, you know...
Absolutely.
That was one thing, as soon as they were talking about the business, everyone's recommendations, next time there's going to be as many signatures, I wish I had to, you know, as much as I have flexibility to get here, I just don't have the time to go around, but...
I don't want you to go away thinking that we gave any less consideration to your comments because you're here alone.
Okay, thank you.
Item 21, 22, 23, and 24 have been continued. Item 25 is an ordinance, and set, to set, or, excuse me, an ordinance to be introduced and set for public hearing and recommendation regarding broadcast towers.
Let me ask, do we need to take five minutes before we start into this, or do we want to just plow ahead?
I could use a very quick break.
Let's do it.
That's okay.
We're going to take five minutes. Let's start. Yes, if you would, please, gentlemen.
Okay, items 21, 22, 23, and 24 are continued. 25 is an ordinance to be set, to be introduced and set for public hearing and recommendation on February 13th related to broadcast and telecommunications towers.
Okay, this is the introduction of the amendments to the communication tower ordinance that City Council asked us to bring forward. And just a little bit of background, in 1980, with the adoption of a new zoning code, it required all towers of any type, anything over 50 feet in height, to obtain a special exception from the Board of Adjustment. The late 1990s, the board, with the cell tower industry really taking off, the board got inundated with tower requests. Everyone was building their own towers, co-location was unheard of, even they did, they did everything they could not to co-locate. So we came... So we came up with the current ordinance that we have today at that time. The intent of this ordinance, the council feels like by the time an application for a cell tower gets to them, that all of the concessions and everything has really been worked out below. And all they're doing is really hearing all the same arguments and everything over again, and with the constraints placed on them by the federal government, they don't have much room to do anything but approve it. So they requested staff to look at that, see if we could streamline the process somehow to allow more of these towers to get administrative approval or just go straight to building permit, and also to eliminate the need for the hearings to come to the city council. So one of the things we thought of to allow us to approve more towers at the permit level, is currently towers require a height of 125, or a setback of 125% of the height of the tower from the property line. And we're considering reducing that to 100% of the height of the tower, which would look something like this. What we found is that towers do not fail. And in the rare, rare instance that one would fail, it would have to fall from the base in a direct line perpendicular to the property line to even reach the property line with this proposed amendment. The next revision is that towers, as you know, are conditional uses. If you meet all the conditions in the code, you go to permit and get a permit for the tower. If you're in a residential district, one of those conditions is a 300-foot separation of the height of the tower to the nearest residential use. That, we're suggesting, take to the 125%, which would look something like this. What we have today is the 300-foot and proposing 125, as it still would not reach the nearest residence. We went back, on the 300-foot separation, we went back 15 years, and we've never really stuck to the 300-foot separation. Every tower that's come in for hearing with less than 300 feet has been approved by the planning commission and council. Another thing was co-location. We're proposing to increase the requirement from two to three carriers on every tower, or they'd be constructed to accommodate three carriers instead of two as they are today.
Does that change the actual physical structure of the tower much to increase that capacity from two to three?
Jerry, I'm into news, Jerry. Jerry Bickel is our city's tower consultant. He could probably answer that better than I.
Jerry Bickel, 4800 Northwest 106 First Street. It will some, it's going to be a little more steel, it's going to be a little bigger round to do that, a little thicker steel. So yes, ma'am, it will. It will change it some. It'll be fatter.
But how much?
Oh, well, I would have to, it would be hard to quantify that just standing here.
In inches, feet, or yards?
Oh, it would be inches, absolutely, just inches. It's inches of steel thicker, inches larger, so maybe just by perspective, it might be a typical tower would go from this to that, to go from two to three carriers, not something terribly aesthetically ugly.
Not suddenly having to like build, you know, buttresses to hold it up, or does it just dramatically change?
Well, what happens a lot of times too, ma'am, is you have a two-carrier pole and somebody wants to go in there as a third carrier, and then they end up going back and kind of ugling it up even worse than it was before by bolting on external steel plates to the outside of the tower. And it just actually changes the look of it to be a little worse than if they just build it directly as a three-carrier pole.
Does a lot of that happen?
Yes, ma'am, sure does, absolutely. With all the deployment going on, happens a lot, actually.
Do cellphone towers have the same strict inspection stuff that guide towers do? I mean, does there somebody have to come in every two or three years and make sure the bolts aren't rusty and?
Yes, sir. They certainly should, and I would say that they probably aren't as inspected as often as they should be. The FCC's looked at rules for that, because sometimes they're not being inspected. The FCC is looking at three-year or five-year rule right now to try to look at requiring tower owners to inspect the towers, because quite honestly, I see a lot of towers that are probably in a, not a good structural place. Now, one thing I will say for all the major carriers, now if you're just putting up some radio station thing or something, those can get poor maintenance. But if you're Verizon or AT&amp;T or T-Mobile or any of the carriers, they have such a high liability because they have deep pockets, they'll get sued for things. And they require everything to be up to snuff on their tower before they go on them. So anytime we would see an AT&amp;T wanting to co-locate, you can be assured that they're going to make sure that it passes structurally, that it's been maintained, that it has all the historic MIPA, SHPO compliance before they ever go on it, but that there's no environmental issues with that tower before they'd ever go on it.
Do, I, sorry, I have a question to you. Are you where, with the federal regulations, are there any examples of aesthetic guidelines for these? Because it seems like there's kind of like two tower options, to me. There's the fake tree one, which I don't agree is an aesthetic option.
Right, right.
And there's kind of the typical tower. And we've talked about stealth towers before, but I wonder, is there anything that keeps the city from implementing aesthetic guidelines? To say, you can do a tower.
Yes, you can require those sorts of things, but you have to require it all the time for everyone, typically. There has to be a rule that you would say, okay, like for instance, it's been years ago, but in Arkansas, I'm trying to think if it's where Razorback Stadium is, that town, it's real aesthetic, why am I forgetting the name of it? Fayetteville, yes, sir, thank you very much. They had some really strict ordinances on aesthetics, and they were requiring trees or some sort of stealth application all the time, or they were making them, building really small, so they could kind of, you know, hide them more. But you have to be consistent, you have to bring those rules to the front early, and they have to be pretty, kind of what we're trying to do here, come up with standard.
Well, it just seems to me that a lot of the protests that we get are mainly focused on the visual impact. We get some in here that are worried about, you know, health things and whatever that we can't really do anything about, but it would seem to me that there might be an opportunity. I don't know how tough it is in the city's eyes, but.
I know, I don't want to. About the base, and you know, just in the same way that we require when escaping at the base of signs, we could certainly require that at the base of towers without any interference from towers operation or whatever, okay, if we chose to do so. Can I ask you, Mr. Chandler's made a comment in the beginning that, you know, what we have discovered is that towers don't fail, is that really true?
Yes, it is, pretty much. The only ones that I've ever seen, I've been doing this a long time, are the guide towers that are really tall, like the AMF and broadcast towers, 1500-foot towers, high winds, things like that often, tornado comes through it, and they typically, they'll typically just spiral down and fall. Self-supporting towers, the ones that have three or four legs, those can get twisted too, and those will fall, they'll fall kind of within their radius, they don't usually just fall that way, they just twist and fall into their own footprint. I've never seen a monopole fail, because just the wind just goes around it. I've seen the antennas at the top when we had the May 3rd tornado in 98. At Tinker, I was in the Air Force then, and we had some towers that were just in the Moore area, and it was fascinating to see that the antennas at the very top, Crow's Nest it's called, had been shoved to one side, the tower was there, the foundation was there, building was gone, the houses were gone, the grass was gone, but the tower was there. So.
We had two fail last year, the KOMA towers when they got hit by the tornado, and then the one up in Piedmont that got hit by an airplane. And that was, that was a guide tower, and it clipped a guy wire line, and the tower did, just like he said, it just collapsed on itself. The KOMA towers just got all twisted up because of the tornado, but they'd been there since 52.
KOMA's been there a long time.
Yeah, I mean, they, up until last year, they had never, with all the stuff that Moore went through, they stood strong.
So if they're well-maintained, that's the one key thing, too. And that may be something the city wants to look at, is making sure that the towers are maintained. It was a kind of question in mind if we wanted to talk about that or not for maintaining towers.
Interesting thing to have you tell us whether we have any ability to do that, you know, given the federal, you know, fantasy on those regulations, whether we have the ability to require, you know, more frequent inspection and that kind of thing as part of, you know, our project. I just wondered.
Well, for instance, and I'll just throw this out there, the T-Mobile towers that were recently talked about and approved, there were some other towers that they're on in the surrounding area, and one of them was an old TV tower. I took pictures of it, but I can't remember exactly what the street intersection was, but I looked at it and was like, man, I wonder if that's really maintained very well, because it was very old, it's been there a very long time. It's about, for the city, it's definitely old because it was well over 200 feet, I think 250 feet tall. And so you just kind of have to wonder, you know, I think it was built in 76 or something, if I recall. So you have to wonder if people are really putting in the financial, you know, necessary to keep it going, and make sure the cross members are not rusted and the bolts are well-maintained. So if you did have a big wind event, and that's right there next to residential area, too.
I know on our towers, they have to be painted every five years. Our insurance company sends out inspectors because of the cost of replacement of the tower. So the insurance people are the ones that drive the inspections as well as the FCC. FCC requires all this stuff as well, that we have to prove that we're doing light bulbs, guy wire maintenance, checking to make sure that they're not rusted off below grade. We actually had to install some things that test the rust below grade and report back to a mechanism that, you know. Yeah, it's, towers are really fun to watch them build. It's crazy how they build them, but I don't know that the city's inspection would be any more stringent than what is already having to be done. Just the sheer insurance issues of it require somebody to come out and look at it once a year, or you can't get it insured, so.
That's a great point, I hadn't considered the insurance, like making sure they do it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, JJ.
Okay. Currently, as you know, if any of the conditions are not met in the code, to get a permit for a tower, you have to get a special permit through the planning commission and city council. We're proposing to change that to a special exception from the Board of Adjustment, which is, it's much similar, very similar to a special permit. Board can impose conditions, they can work out concessions with neighbors, but it does just require the one hearing, it goes to the board, and then it's done. We're establishing specific conditions that must be met by the applicant when it does go to the Board of Adjustment, and those are similar to the conditions that the applicant comes to you with a special permit and tries to, has to explain, that there's a gap in coverage, that there's no other sites that would be available, that they've investigated other sites, that the co-location opportunities aren't there, that they can't co-locate on an existing tower or building, and that the tower would satisfy the least intrusive means test of closing the gap in coverage. So this is the introduction, we're asking that we bring it back on February 23rd for the final hearing. 13th, okay.
So how are you feeling about this? New ordinance, you've been through it, I assume, and looked at the, what, for instance, are the appeal implications of having it go through this special exception versus the process that is currently?
Well, I think it would, by going through the Board of Adjustment, it'd just be appealed into the, directly to the city council. I mean, district court, I'm sorry.
And what would be the standard, the burden there on special exceptions?
Well, I think it's going to be the same standards that are set forth here in the ordinance, with additional, I think they may have some additional standards for special exception uses, you know, just like isn't harming with the, you know, surrounding compatibility, harming, all those kind of things. But these were the standards that are specifically set out for the cell towers in the ordinance for special exceptions.
So would you follow the NOVO in the district court?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, JJ. Do you have any questions?
That's what we hired Jerry for.
They present the evidence, the applicant presents the evidence reviewed by our experts, and it's ultimately part of the decision made by the board.
So, and I don't know, I can't, I've lost track of like time and, among other things, but whether it was at the Board of Adjustment or here, what would happen before is essentially someone would come up and say, here's all this stuff, we have an RF engineer who's put together all this data, and he agrees with everything, and the guy in the back who could have been, you know, a construction worker from the building down the street is like, yep. Well, at that point, we didn't have anyone from the city, which is what was required to refute that data, so then the city hired someone to begin to refute that data. But I think the answer to your question is, once they get to district court, it would be on the applicant, right, the petitioner at that point, to prove that they meet the criteria, they'd have to present that evidence, and then the city would have to defend against it, if they denied the application. And if the Board of Adjustment denied it, and it went on to district court, that's exactly how it would play out, because it's a de novo review of the law, and that is, those would be the elements of the law that would have to be discussed. Does that answer your question?
Okay, do you have any other questions? Thank you, JJ. Item 26.
So.
Oh, we are, do we need to make a motion? I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to set the ordinance for introduction in public hearing and recommendation on February 13th, 2020.
Second.
The motion is second, set the ordinance for public hearing on February 13th, cast your votes. It's set.
Okay, the final item is an introduction of the downtown development framework, which has been amended, and Lisa Cronister, the Assistant Planning Director, is here to give us a brief presentation.
Hello, almost there, so close. Good to see you guys, Lisa Cronister. I presented this update to you at a study session this summer. It has since been to all of the design review committees that it affects. It's also been presented to the downtown OKC board, the Midtown board, Bricktown board, Automobile Alley board. So it's an update to the downtown development framework, which was first produced in 2015, and we have been in the process of updating it over the past almost two years. So what is the DDF? It's an adopted plan, it's been adopted by city council, planning commission, and by the design review committees whose areas it affects. That's downtown design review, riverfront design review, and urban design commission. It's a policy document, it's a guide for investment, it is used. It is used in, in, uh, decision-making for capital improvement projects. Um, it's a guide not just for, uh, public investment, but also for the private sector. Uh, for, uh, design review, um, it contains additional design guidelines about, regarding the public realm. And, um, it's been adopted as a supplemental guideline by, by the three committees. It's also been in, adopted by reference in the downtown, uh, design ordinance that was passed about a year ago. So, um, the components, there's a development framework that talks about, uh, develop, development typologies, uh, retail priority areas, storefront areas. Um, there's a section on, um, all things, transportation, automobiles, transit, pedestrian ways. Then there is a design framework component that talks about how the streets are designed, how the buildings along the streets are designed, how the, um, streetscape in front of the buildings is designed. So, uh, this update started, um, to correct various typos and update maps, but along the way in the process of updating it and in all of our outreach, uh, we, we uncovered some other important changes. We've changed some, um, uh, typologies, the development typologies map, but I'll go through all these six in a little more detail. Uh, we've deleted, uh, some of the more confusing pages of the document. Uh, we've, uh, increased, uh, the guidance on street car and park frontage areas. We've changed, uh, some of the street typologies and, uh, we've reorganized, uh, the building design section. But back to, the, the general changes have been correcting typos, making sure the street names and numbers were more legible and, um, adding, uh, things like, uh, thumbnail maps and references to make it all much more, uh, readable. So updated certain development typologies, so, uh, the image on the screen now is, is what was, is the original. And then on the right is what has been updated. Uh, the biggest changes we made to the, to all of the maps were to make sure all of the park areas were accurately documented. We updated, um, the downtown lower park, especially the lower park. We updated the maps regarding the convention center. It's hard to remember that when the DDF was first developed, we didn't know for sure where the convention center site was going to be. Um, uh, the other biggest change on this map was to illustrate Automobile Alley as, uh, as an historic special destination area. It had been shown, so right now it's shown in the new revised map. It's shown as purple, so it's shown the same as Bricktown. And that's to recognize that, that Automobile Alley and Bricktown, they both, they derive their, uh, physical form from, uh, the character of the historic, uh, buildings on the routes. Then, uh, we deleted the building typology compatibility matrix. This, um, uh, it's been very confusing over the past few years to interpret and to apply. It's trying to say that some uses are fully compatible next to other uses and some uses are partially compatible next to other uses. Why is that confusing? Uh, there's no threshold or description of what constitutes partially or fully compatible. And, uh, staff believes that we have so many other guidelines in terms of scale and massing and materials that help to ensure physical compatibility between uses. We're deleting the future development planning guide. Um, this was easily the most confusing page in the document to interpret and to apply because it was, um, never certain at any given point in time if this was aspirational, if it was reflecting market forces, if it was reflecting development on the ground, if it was develop, if it was documenting, uh, existing development. So, um, we're proposing to delete it. Where there was, there was some information in the guide chart in terms of density and, uh, like stories and massing, there was some, uh, descriptive info there that we thought was important to keep. So where we thought it was important to keep, we revised the typology introductory paragraph to incorporate it. And number four, um, uh, one thing the original DDF did not do was acknowledge, fully acknowledge just the significant investment in the street car and park areas and that those areas needed just the highest quality development in terms of, uh, we needed active uses at street level, we needed a, a vertical mix of uses wherever we could get them. We, uh, structured parking on the park and on, uh, the street car route was, was not the best use of those properties and, uh, that we needed to limit curb cuts just as a functional, um, response to the street car route. Then, uh, updated a few of the street typologies, uh, mainly, uh, we, we showed the existing platted right-of-ways in the Producers Co-op site, uh, over here, on the Cox Convention site, on the site south of, uh, Myriad Gardens, between Myriad Gardens and the park. And we updated some of the typologies in the Deep Deuce area. Then, uh, the building design section, we, we streamlined it to make it, uh, much easier to find information, but nothing, nothing changed in these sections. That is it. So it's being brought to you for introduction and set for final hearing on February 13th.
So our next, our next hearing, we're not pushing this up. Okay, great. Do we have any questions that we want to go into at this time?
I'll probably have some, I mean, I'll probably have some thoughts for you. I can email you on before the.
That, that would be great.
But the, uh, I'm really glad that you guys are deleting the future development guide. I think that's super confusing and it creates, uh, a misperception in the public as to what its intent was and makes people make arguments that don't make sense and then they get mad.
I'm curious, and we don't necessarily have to go into all this here, but as you were talking about, you know, identifying sort of the highest and best quality development in certain areas, how do we define that? And then how do we enforce slash defend that on a day-to-day decision-making basis?
Well, for, in, uh, design review, uh, we always reference the DDF because it does have more specific guidance. For example, the ordinance language doesn't include, uh, informa, doesn't, um, specify that ground floor should be active uses and we can't require that as a regulation, but we can establish it as a guideline. Um, you know, the vertical mix of uses, uh, that's a little more specific than the ordinance text says. Um, uh, maybe, uh, things like, um, you know, there shouldn't be parking lots or structured parking on the street car route, but, I mean, they're not, we can't, they are an allowed use, but, uh, they really should be integrated with, um, more dense and vertically mixed buildings.
So those are choices about uses that will, what, leverage, uh, other kinds of, um, desirable development around them or, uh, conversely, might discourage that? I mean, that's, that's what you're looking at there? In terms of what, how, how you define what the best kind of development is? I mean, what, what is the criteria there?
On, uh, the definition of best?
Well, or, or, I mean, how do you choose between? This one's good, this one's okay.
Well, and the way, the way, I'll expand, the way, when I present this to other groups, the way I usually, uh, explain it that makes sense, the best, the best sense to me is, we're not, we're not saying you're not allowed to have structured parking on the street car route. We're not saying you have to have a five to eight-story building. What we're saying is if you are not building the tallest, most dense building, most active building you can, you're not taking advantage of a huge circulation and market opportunity that exists if you're on the street car route, if you're on the park. Because the ordinance minimum height is three stories and we don't, uh, there's a full range of uses allowed in the downtown and DTD1 areas.
Okay, so it has to do with maximizing those op, okay.
So none of this is regulatory?
It's, uh, regulatory in that it is, it is a guideline. It's, it's, it's a codified guideline.
But not necessarily a requirement.
It's not a regulation.
Right.
Mike, Mike's laughing. Mike's been on the Board of Adjustment for over a year, so he knows, he knows why that's funny. Yeah, no, your point is well taken and, um, you know, that is a big, um, that is a big issue because people come in and they don't really understand that, what's, what's a standard or an ordinance and a guideline. And if you're on the wrong side of that, it's, it's very frustrating. I mean, there's, I'm, I'm sure Mike at this point has heard his fair share. I know Janice and I did at our time. You hear these arguments, especially in places that are, you know, like the Cottage District was a big one when we were there. I don't know if it still is, but, yeah, but at the time those were, I mean, and people are going, but these are the guidelines, these are the guidelines. Like, the guideline doesn't mean, I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean, it's not determinative, it's a guideline, you know? So anyway, that's the issue. Asa.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Are we taking action at all on this? Are we having to set it or?
Yeah, you're setting it for, for final hearing.
Okay. I will take a motion then.
Motion to do just that. Second. What day?
My motion is second to set this for hearing on, on January 23rd.
February 13th.
13th.
February 13th, okay. Uh, on favor, cast your votes, please. It's set.
Thank you. I'm, I wanted to remind everybody about the Commissioner Training, uh, workshop that's happening January 31st. I believe everybody received a save the date and we'll be sending out the final agenda in the next week.
It's always good, everybody can make it.
And it's going to be at the Civic Center Hallamere's this year.
Oh. Thank you, thank you. Um, oh, I, I don't have my list in front of me, I'm sorry if you forgot an agenda. Um, you know, I actually was thinking to myself, oh, we need to talk about this when we come to, uh, not Planning Commission Committees, Pres, what are we, uh, the Preserve OKC, that's exactly what it was. Um, I, you all got an email, uh, forwarding to you the finished product on the Preserve OKC, not finished product, but, you know, work in progress. Um, and we're going to set that for hearing and adoption, is that right?
Yes, uh, well, I guess.
Or is it already set?
It's not set yet. Uh, the question is, uh, I thought I heard that you might want a study session.
I think even just maybe earlier that day. I, I want everybody to have this kind of freshly in mind and for those of you who, who want to dig deep, you know, to get some of your questions answered and, um, we have the materials so that we can look at them in our, our leisure leading up to that. But I was hoping that we would just do a study session before we have it heard. Um, and, um, it's just, you know, that little more informal structure, uh, forum is just a little easier for that than, you know, 4:30.
Yeah, and, and we're, we're going, we're going to see if we can carve out a little bit of time for a small breakout at the Commissioner Training.
Hmm.
So that, since most everyone's going to be there anyway, anyway, it shouldn't take too long because we, we have presented it at a study session earlier in the summer, I think.
We did, yeah.
But that, that should be, we should be able to get everyone a refresh, informal opportunity to ask more questions, so.
So with, with the planning commissioners and HP commissioners?
Um, I hadn't thought that. It's already gone to HP. They, they've had two hearings. Uh, they had an introduction and, uh, a recommendation hearing.
So they've already made their recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Anyway, so, um, hopefully we'll be able to achieve that so we don't have to have a separate, but if we can't, we're happy to have it.
So if we're, if we do that, that will kind of act as a study session if you're, if this group is amenable to that. Um, and then the question is, given that we've already had the, kind of the joint session, it's, it's been a few months, you know?
October, yeah.
October. Uh, do we, do we want to have it come to this body twice as an introduction and a final or just come once? That's kind of our question to you, what's your preference?
You know, I would, I would like to do a study session. I would rather not do it at the training session just because I think, you know, there's so much else going on at that and it's kind of about different things. But, you know, I, I'm certainly willing to hear what others think about that. And then having done that, I think once is enough. I mean, I, I don't necessarily think we have to hear it and, or set it down for introduction and then, you know, set it down for vote and, uh, I, I think we can compress the time. I just would like an opportunity for those who have questions, concerns, want to know more, whatever, to have kind of a, just an informal time and space to ask those questions.
Well, my comment on that would be if we, if we don't have another breakout session, like in the past at these, at these training, uh, commission committee training events, we've had, you know, breakout sessions with City Council people or we've done, uh, there's been a couple of different things we've done. If we don't have one of those planned and it's, and it's available in the schedule, I frankly would love to make the most of that.
One time out of the office?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a selfish comment.
Do we already have a breakout session that's scheduled or not? Well, then maybe that would be the best time to do it. I'm certainly sensitive to that.
Did, does, did traffic get in the way this year?
No, because they're not part of the Planning Department and that's like a thing, so.
Okay.
We're working on it. We're working on it.
You can't come because you were on the tra, the Traffic Commission.
We're working.
And we all know traffic has nothing to do with planning.
I remember when we did that, like everybody was a bunch of jerks.
That's what we were all just talking about.
Uh, I will mention that at that, uh, well.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I, I will mention that, uh, at that training, we will have our code consultant there. Uh, it, it's taken us a little longer than, than we had hoped to get this launched, but it's, it's coming soon. The mayor is working on a stakeholder advisory team, so that's kind of, uh, where it's at right now. We've given him, uh, a list of, of people and he's kind of, he's got a lot of committees to put together, as you can imagine, with the passage of maps for, so that's where that's at. Uh, but in the meantime, while we're waiting for that to get assembled and put together and have a kickoff and everything, we're going to have the consultant here. Uh, he'll give, uh, I understand it's the lunch, uh, the lunchtime, uh, presentation, uh, to the, to that group, so we'll get a bit of an update and an educational, uh, opportunity for discussion and feedback, so. Um, that's, that's the next step in, in the code update.
Is, is the consultant's selection public? Like, do we know who they are? I still don't know.
Oh, yeah, it's, uh, it's White and Smith. Um, uh, and, and also, um, they're, they have a couple of, uh, sub consultants, um, that, uh, they're on board and, you know, they've, they've done what they can at this point, um, while we're, you know, so we're just kind of waiting for that public, that really important, uh, team, which, uh, several Planning Commissioners, we expect to be on that, uh, and, uh, so that's kind of where we're at.
Um, Planning Commission members, anybody want to share? Um, Planning Department, that was your thing. Development Services, useful counselor. Everybody's ready to go home. Citizens to be heard. Um, other business. Adjournment, I'll take a motion.
Second.
Take a second. Motion second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.